Good morning.
Morning, ready?
Yeah, I saw the comment in here that they're not coming. I saw lots of different people saying they were coming. This was not the one I saw.
Not the one I expected.
So they're not coming this year? I can guarantee to go with them.
I believe that.
Well, I was too. He was from Long. You know, he started in like April.
He didn't, I mean, he knew the project. He knew what he did.
A long time prior.
He didn't even try to give you a report until he knew he put it down.
That's what I suspected. And good, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah. Zero.
That would be too much.
Oh, okay. Did anybody not get a claim?
I got it. So here, two hundred and eighty-five questions.
There we go.
You need somebody with less than one day.
Thank you, Neil. I didn't either.
Weird.
Oh, it's nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock, we'll call the media for order. First on agenda, approval of the previous minutes.
Comment on should approve. It's important.
This is by Dan, second by Dennis to approve the notes from previous day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the quarterly reports. Those were emailed out to you. Does anybody want to look at the hard copy or?
Whistle, I don't, I clearly have any questions.
We have a motion to approve.
I'm approving approved quarterly reports. Most supportive.
Motion by Dennis, second by John to do the quarterly reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
The report was, takes a lot of money in a year, don't they?
Yeah. They would call up sales, might be.
Exactly. Send a lot to the state. Better chunk. Morning.
Good morning.
Or does he, he, the traffic county for off-road vehicles? Or does that, he go to? Is that going to sheriff's office or the?
That goes to state too.
That would just, I think. Better, that will share that. Well, there's one that's to be honored, there was another one that's just. They wear a county tag. Yeah, they wear a county tag, I still think.
That's a trick.
Or second, can we just.
Is that right, Barb, even our local one? Some, most of the law that goes state.
For.
Permits for.
Off-road vehicles.
Off-road vehicles. So that was the state too. Like, speedy type anything, some, law that goes to state too, or is that all state?
Oh, most of that goes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. That's why they wanted to take over the court system years ago. They wanted the money.
Yep.
Welcome, Jamie. You know, it's thirty.
Good morning. It's coming around for you there, it's just our six-month report. We do it twice a year. I just wanted to report some. Really nothing more really significant from last, from last year. I was doing some comparisons and I apologize. I think one of the things I'm going to do next year is use a six-month compared to the previous year's six months and then have them all on page so you can see what's going on right here. It makes it easier to see the numbers and see if there's growth or increase or what. Last year about this time, we're a little bit under-promoting for last year. We're, right now, you can see nine hundred and forty-six individuals and four hundred and fifty families at the six-month mark. And this is since tenth of one, twenty-twenty. Last year, it was at a thousand twenty-eight. And of course, we're in the middle of the pandemic at that point, so it was pretty busy at four hundred and fifty-four families. So just wanted to point that out for you. You guys have been, believe it or not, have been very busy offices. We're in this, kept that one going pretty well. We do have another person that comes over to assist her on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That, Brendan now is also working part-time, or part of her time with us now, just doing housing. So she's also working on housing programs that we do. So if she's not here, she's over in Fort Goddard and some other areas, getting people signed up for that. The one I'd like to really talk about is the last page as far as the, went the one with the blue bars on it. And those, some of those numbers are duplicated. Though some of those numbers are duplicated, really does give a better picture as to the number of families and individuals that were serving with our various services. And we grouped them together. Obviously, as it is previous years, the emergency energy services, which are LIEP, and the program that we call ESIP, which replaces furnaces, emergency furnaces when there's a problem. In the homes are our biggest ones, and as you can see, we spent one point five, a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in that area. We serve three hundred and forty-three households with that service and seven hundred and ninety-nine individuals. This area of the state, we're in the more rural counties, is our biggest challenge in that we need to get the word out. We still get feedback from the state that we have some uncertain claims here. Of course, they don't tell us specifically who they are. So we're going to try to make another concentrated effort to get the word out on that. It's hard to do that, you know, media's changed so much. You never know which one's going to get to the families or individuals the most. But we're going to do, try to get out to some more rural areas this year and see if we can't get them drawn into do applications. I think if nothing else was learned during this pandemic, it was learn how to communicate better with one another. And I think we can do a little bit better job reaching out to individuals. And one of the things that we've been doing a lot over the last year was getting applications completed online or on telephone. Yeah, though it doesn't, tends to have its own share of problems, like especially if you deal with the elderly, they're not as always good or proficient with computers. Not trying to stereotype that, just typically the situation, at least I know my parents never could do it. That's one of the things that we've worked with them on, and getting the need paid for work. So that's always going to be the backup, that's going to be the biggest challenge. But we really do need to reach out to all the LIEP areas and make sure that we're getting that energy services onto those families and individuals. Obviously, another big one here is the food programs. That's very well supported also by Valero. They really like that program, they contribute a lot to that one, as well as the back school programs as well. Housing programs continues to grow with us. We did get another increase in housing. This last year is a really a good conversation to have about where we're going to see typical funding go over the next couple of years. Because obviously, more money was dumped into a lot of emergency services for families. And as that starts to taper off, we're going to see, probably a lot more individuals and families struggling to get through because they got used to having that money there in that short-range period of time. I'm going to share some examples of that with you here in a second. One of the ones that's continuing to grow, and we talked about this last time, was our weatherization program. And they're looking at actually increasing the funding at the federal level next year. So, but we did add, if you remember the conversation, several counties over to the east. I think it was five counties we added over towards, Cerro Rojo was the farthest east we went, so over by the Mason City area. And down south, we picked up several counties. That was one of the programs that was not considered an essential service by the state government. And therefore, was not provided critical carrying of funding for us to keep that in operation when the pandemic was full swing. So basically, that program shut down. The good thing, however, about that, was one of the first ones to get back up. So we were able to get them back up to swing in about November, and they were already doing homes. We're averaging now, which is a good thing, about ten to twelve homes a month. And the guys get out, we still work with local contractors. That's getting to be more of a challenge because obviously, you may be aware in some areas, there's plenty of work for contractors right now. So we have to compete with them, make sure that we are able to draw them in. So far to date, we have not had any challenges. But I know that's on the top of the list as far as with our director, that we stay on top of that and keep recruiting and try to bring them on. So, and if you work in that area and they know it's an insulation contractor, just send them our way, we're going to have to bring them onboard.
You said you're averaging ten to twelve homes a month.
Yeah. Now, remember, that's in our fifteen-county area.
Okay.
So what typically happens, so you understand, is that when we get a home or one that's referral, that we've located for service, we'll go out and do a pre-assessment of the home to determine what exactly needs to be done. Replacement appliances, windows, that kind of thing. Then, once that's done, then we'll identify a contractor that we have on file, send them, and then they'll go out to the home and set up times to help their women work on the home. Once they get done, they notify us, and then we go back out again and do a post-inspection. If there's any problems with rework that needs to be done, we send that back to the contractor to make that happen before we pay any contractor or cover the services. And then, once that's done, then the sum report's off to the state. So it's quite a process because onboard, we go, I mean, it makes it good because we don't carry our own contractors and helps put the money on the community. But it's quite a task for four guys to get out in thirteen counties and make sure that the evaluation's done, so they're always on the go during the day.
Do you use the same contractor for all, or you, you set up?
It depends. We've got, I think, gosh, you put me on the spot here, not intentionally. I want to say we have about forty-two contractors that we work with around the area. So it depends. If one's available, we try to use them for their area because they're familiar with it, but sometimes, you know, they're busy and we have to go with another one, have them cover that area.
Do you go by bits and.
Yeah, they have to bid for the project, we do that, we do those contracts with them every year we have to send them on.
I heard my first one was housing. And that was the first one I heard, so good. Is what this program's only six months or something?
Yeah. So that's, as you can see, we've spent over, way over those four million dollars in the county as far as the various services that we do. We continue to get really good local support. And one of the big challenges that we've had through the year is actually our funding. And it isn't, in some areas, it isn't so much the lack of funding, it's actually the too much funding. And the area that seems to be a little more saturated than that is in the area of utilities and, believe it or not, housing. Though those are critical services in areas, they, during a typical year, there's never enough of that. But in this last year, I don't know if any of you read the point register a few weeks ago, there's a program called the Iowa Rent Utility Assistance Program that they put out. And basically, the Iowa Finance Authority took that one on, they were given about a hundred and ninety-six million dollars. This was a second round program. Originally, it was the Iowa Rent and Foreclosure Program. And that was our first round of that. What you do is if you're interested in that as a client, you go to the Iowa Finance Authority website and you click, you click on their thing, and then you can do a pre-assessment. And you, as the client, have to fill out the application. So you got to go through on the line and complete that. Then you also refer your landlord over there, who also fills out their forms. And you, as a client, have to make sure you attach your lease and justify how COVID has made it difficult for you to get your back rents or rentals in there or utilities. And then it goes to our agency or a sister agency throughout the state. We make sure, follow up to make sure all the back supporting documentation is attached, and then we'll review the application to the state and say it's approved, it's meeting your criteria. And the state will pay directly to the landlord and/or whoever owns the home there. Sounds like in the initial one, it went great. The second round is horrible, it's just awful. They went, the state spent all this money on a brand-new computer system that doesn't work. It's inundated and they won't release the information. So people who are doing the applications with, the clients can help them through that process. Of course, them being in Des Moines and the clients being all over the state, that makes it really difficult. So not trying to downplay that, but sometimes it's best to leave the jobs to the people who know how to do the jobs, it is to do it that way. So that's one we're working on. But then also, we got lots of carers' money, ensure we're at the various programs. So, and so we're trying to make sure that we expend that money in the emergency solutions grant, they call it, for rental assistance, as well as trying to help the state expend their money with this IRUAP program, as well as rent our typical money. So it's quite a challenge, and it's been quite a juggle. One of the ones I wanted to share with you that's coming up is also utilities. It's been a big effort recently. And not only do we provide, as you're aware, through LIEP utility assistance, we're also going to be giving money to carry it over to the summary of those who have medical conditions or are busy. But also, this IRUAP program is out there, and the federal government has decided, and the money is coming down because the state just sent us notices, to do what they call LIWAP. And that's the Low Income Water Assistance Program. So before, we could never, through LIEP, we could never clean water. Or, you know, this is not considered a vital utility. But we're noticing a lot of people, especially during the pandemic, water was getting cut off while you need water cleaning the house, doing those things. So they saw that as an urgent need, which I don't disagree with, so they started a new program. So, and the challenge that we have with that is somewhat like LIEP, you know, we have to go out there and we have to set up all these vendors. Cities, counties in some cases, private utility companies and all that, so we can directly pay them, or we're going to have to do that with the water as well. Some of those will be done, if they're global communities, that makes it easy, but some are going to be brand-new. So we're anticipating having a contract that will potentially be fifty to a hundred more vendors on there and get that set up. And it'll roll really fast. So, so I'll send the information out to you guys, because that program becomes available, so you know that. Definitely, I know in smaller communities, we are constantly trying to figure out ways to help older individuals to get their water bills covered in some cases, and this is going to be helpful to do that. So I could go on forever about this. This last year has been, been really interesting. So do you have any questions on the report? This is just an update.
Going back, is there a timeline, when the person, after they purchase a home, when they can, if they're going to live in the house for a year or?
No.
Be a homeowner.
No.
Programs will start by the way.
Yeah. So I did want to talk to you a little bit today, and me and Barb were talking in the hall today. One of the, and I talked with, Guadavita County brought it up, and actually, the first meeting that I had, they were the ones, they, we talked about it right away. And it's been, I've been having this conversation with all the county boards. It was a nice write-up in the paper, by the way. Your article on that. So, has to do with the state auditor's advisory. And this has really actually been out for quite a while. The conversation started, I'm, you'll quote me on the years, time passes by more quickly now. I want to say about five years ago, this conversation was being had, or six years ago. And I'm trying to find my old auditor's advisory from that one. Anyhow, basically, that said, you guys are familiar, obviously, with the dialogue that's going on. One of the ways that we're approaching that, at least with Upper Des Moines, and I know several of my sister agencies are also doing that, is that we are, we are not looking at this as a donation. We don't see it as a donation. That's always been our argument with the state auditor's office at the state level, or at least our debate with them. You guys provide more of a fee-for-service than anything else for the people in the community, and they're vital services that we provide, on top of all the other ones that we get separate grants for. And so with that, one of the things that we've always done with you is, obviously, I come and speak to you and provide reports as to what services and how the money's extended. The second part of that is that we invoice you twice, at least twice, twice a year. I think in some cases, it's done quarterly, depending on county. So for the services that we do provide you. The one piece that we haven't done, that I am currently working with our attorney on developing is a template, and that's a 2080 contract that we can have with each of the county, saying this is a fee-for-service, and this is what we'll do to provide that for the money that you're going to bring to us. So basically, again, and I keep using this term, and please forgive me for doing it, but it's a fee-for-service, it's not a donation. And I definitely, believe it or not, that, it's amazing how words mean something, and you got to be real careful in your dialogue. So I'm training staff. Also, we don't talk about county funding as a donation, it's never been a donation. We do a lot of work out there, and gosh, everybody should know that, it should be the outreach. So you're well aware of what we have to do.
Is it necessary to have 2080?
Except for a contract, I think would be a good deal.
Contract with your board?
Yeah, yeah.
I had a conversation with our, the manager of our, I don't know, I guess it would be the 20 audit last week. And I would like to finish that conversation with her, maybe tomorrow we will. But she indicated to me that as long as we've got, as we always have from Upper Des Moines, we've gotten our reports from them and these other organizations as well. We're getting the reports, and then we also have a statement of the public purpose in the minutes, that she thought we'd be fine.
Okay.
So now, Auditor Sam talks about 2080s. So I think, you know, if you want to go that far, you certainly can, and would, you know, it would definitely solidify that, that it is a public purpose.
And then it'd be up to you, the individual county, if they want to do that. And we just want to have a template on hand to make sure it's available, that becomes the critical issue. And if you look, on the back of your report, I'm also including this there here now, is the financial situation that we're currently, for your county and your council. I do this with each county. And we look at, we do an expenditures and revenues account there, and see what you brought in. Only the last, first six months there is at seventy-three thousand. The prior year, which that's why I would break these down by six months, six month, year by year, for the whole year last year was a hundred and seventeen thousand. So you can see that we've done very well in bringing in revenues, and you can see yours listed in there along with the other donations and relief that we get from other locations. So, you know, it's critical, we had to receive at that point for the six months. It's critical that your funding that you do provide, and I believe you're at seventy-five hundred dollars, if I remember correctly. Pretty sure, because the year prior was fifteen thousand. You helped pay a lot of the rev, the expenditures that we have at that office, and these continue to rise every time we get going. One of the things that I find quite amazing for O'Brien County, and I, and I'm not saying this to get good affirmation or fluffstrokes, I call, but you, as a rural county goes, other than our funding, which is CSPG, and other than your funding, there is a lot of outreach from your local contributors. And it's quite amazing as to how the response was in O'Brien County, with individuals giving anywhere from donations of food to cash, it came in pretty well. So you guys take care of your own very well, and that's, that can't be separated accounting. Our largest county that we serve doesn't do anything for it. So this makes a big difference, and I will strongly encourage that we continue our partnership through the years, we make a big impact in your county. So you guys have an interesting rural population over there. It's, it's got to be the agricultural business, is that, would that be fair? We continue to get more and more numbers over here.
Oh, hey.
Yeah, yeah, the population seems to grow, and not just the meat, but the population in general. So I just find that interesting.
We'll find out, I guess.
Maybe in August or September, we'll find out.
Yeah, yeah.
We hope so.
You're kind of somewhat meaty.
I think so.
I mean, to some degree.
Well, what, again, I want to emphasize, one of the big impacts that we're going to have next year is, is that I keep telling everybody this, and I caution my staff, making sure that when we work with clients and we get rid of, help them to get rid of some of their agreements in the utilities, or some of their back rents or those things, to remind these individuals and families that I, I'll put money on it, the state of my life, but next year, this money is not going to be there. And it's going to decrease dramatically and quickly because, I mean, this, they just keep dumping it in right now, and can't keep the space up. And what's going to happen is those who are desperately in need are going to be even more desperately in need. And I'm not quite sure how we're going to make the impact for them then, but we need to prep them now and start giving skills to get beyond that, because it's going to be a problem. And we're all doing this across the country, we're having that conversation, so.
How far behind are some of the projects, are some of them six, seven, eight months out, or is everything?
Not that far. No, not that far, not far. You know, the interesting thing is, my gosh, I, I started with this IRUAP program, I've gone in there because I got to, I got to help them out, we have a few staff doing that, and it's just a time-consuming process. And I was going in there, and we've got some people coming in, agreements as much as twelve months. We're talking sixteen thousand dollars behind in utilities or in rent. I don't understand how that's possible, with all the programs out there, I just don't understand how it stopped to that point. But if you don't do anything, it's never going to go away. So you got to help, help them at least at some level. But I think that, again, one of our emphasis is going to be over the next six months now, is to look at the skill development. What do you have got to keep that budget, or how to keep flowing, so.
So if I look at this paper, it says in red, that was forty-seven thousand four hundred.
No, 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 that would be your, your expenditures for that.
Okay. So we're not seeing a shortfall somewhere?
No, no, you're not. But remember, this is six months now.
Right. I was just thrown off by the shortage paid by, I don't know.
That's on there for all of them.
Okay.
And some county, no, you are not red, it's just because that's negative drawdown from there for my purposes. Yeah, you guys are in the lark. You're in the lark by twenty-six thousand right now, so you're fine, you're, no, you're fine. Thanks for asking the question. Okay. So no, there shouldn't be any problems, I don't think, this year at all for them. We've done very well with, like I said, in the donations area. So O'Brien County, I've never had to worry about them at all. There's other counties that I worry, that this year, they were in the red, bottom line, number there was in the red as well. So, so those, and right now, so usually that's the worst one, you have to call the files, and, but you add another six months in there, there you go. You got that time to run, there you go, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
You have. Any other questions? And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. We'll see you then, probably.
Yes, yes, we're on, yeah, whatever. Thank you, guys.
You bet.
Next on agenda, American Rescue Plan Funding Reports. I don't have any.
No new ones? I just, really have one, right?
Just the yes, Senator?
Yes, correct. Correct. Okay.
So then, I don't know how much good this will do, but I did receive the draft permit for Van Ass.
You did?
That was dated July 1st. So, just, yeah, and they had requested that we would waive the 14 days. So, there's not much left, but we do have the paperwork together, if you want to do that. So, you would need a motion to adopt a resolution for approval of the waiver of the county's rights to appeal the issuance of the final construction permit for the Van Ass confinement.
I would make that motion. It was supported.
Questions by Dan, second round, Shannon, adopt a resolution to consider waiving the grant for Van Ass. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
They would be interested in getting certain, long of those, everything else. Every day comes.
There was a resolution of a lot of them. I'm going to run a quick scan, so I can get them sent to the DNR.
I don't know how to hold on, I can't do the copy.
I don't want to print it out.
A lot of spam in the size.
On the box of damage, a part of it is somewhere on the same one.
So, I have a lot of blockings.
Have a kiln tree, is that?
Every time.
I do think one of the best things we kind of did was push for laptops, and try to make things more electronic.
Yeah.
Because, um, yeah, it helps with a lot of meetings. You can come in. James, why don't you come in too? You can come in. Yeah. My door is shut for the sound purposes, it echoes too much.
Well, be quiet.
I think a lot more people want to hit some chairs and chairs with that, I would say. We probably will need them in the rain if it's hard to shoot them, come that time.
Fine, thanks. We have just an opportunity to come to figure. We have the opportunity.
It's the only one in the world. Nobody's challenging you there.
Personal bank.
Oh, okay. Yep. It looks at the big side. All that work.
Actually, we're prior, right?
Now, we, three more minutes.
You only sent out four, right?
I guess. I did, yeah, I only sent you four.
That's all I've sent, right?
That's all I have received.
I was disappointed by that, I could see, at least, the settlement.
Okay. 9:35. Next on the agenda, appointment of conservation board member. And we have received as a board four applications, returned back. So, I'm assuming we all want to look at those things? I'll check.
Do you think it would be beneficial to have something on our website somewhere that people can go and find this, if they want to fill it out, and file?
Sure. Sure.
It would just make it.
Easy.
Yeah. If people know, they can always find it there.
I agree. Question about that, too.
Well, and that's the other thing I was wondering, is this going to be your process going forward for VA, Public Health, Conserva-, for any of those warrants?
I'm assuming it should be.
It has, I think it has to be.
It would be nice.
It's a great option, too.
Yep.
I mean, I still am not opposed to having them goes out, and having them come to sit and interview.
Do you think maybe veterans has one they are using?
They might, they have just a little bit different process than the other two. Don't ask me what it is right now, because I don't remember.
Who's that?
Is it, I think VA has maybe an application they do have? So, I mean, not to say we have to use the same one, but we could get whatever one they are using.
Oh, yeah, this is specific to county, but I think every department needs an application.
Yeah, I think so, too. It's a little sound, but.
I was impressed with it. When I called him, there is someone answers, saying someone to the question I got.
I still think it's a good thing to consider geographically spread the board members out.
Truly, if that was the case, sort of, to them, right?
I mean, I'm not discounting anybody's applications, but I do think having a board spread out represents all areas of the county, isn't it?
Sure. Sure. One concern I have, the one I can, uh, keep or, you all have in front of you, might be the Zoom option at certain times. I understand that.
Based on how many special meetings we have had? I mean, that's a, a real thing.
I, yeah.
Yeah, and it might not be a Zoom option, it might be a Zoom option.
Yeah. But that is an option? Okay.
We've had that before with board members at home.
Okay. As we.
Yeah.
I'll have past experience on various positions and orders and so on. All our business owners. Sorry, please. We have preferences.
Do you three have any opinions, comments?
I mean, I admit I didn't call any of them in. I kind of solely wanted to base it off of this, I guess. I appreciated that one, one of the applicants handwriting was very relatable. He also talked about being a problem solver, which I personally consider not a good thing. But I actually thought any of them made really good points, or similar interests and dedication, or... And all made comments of appreciating what we have, and moving up for it.
Basically, I was impressed with it all of them. And the DDL team is very beneficial.
And I was impressed with her. I like that.
There's definitely very hobbies and interests, which is great, too. Which just provides that much more opportunity for conversation that we might not always think about. I think, there's definitely some good options of adding depth and conversation and consideration at the board level. But in my mind, again, I would say they're all good, but I would take it down to better over by the way.
Can't argue that, no. And I know one, I knew two of the four out there. No doubt the other two. I don't know about them.
I like the team from Polina, has both been at regular meetings down there, too. And that shows interest, and I think that's great.
I agree.
Keith has been there quite a few times, took it to it. I've been on the East Board meetings and stuff, too, and that's great.
And he seems at a pretty, pretty level that he can take.
No doubt.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's kind of where I'm at, too.
A lot of board experience on Greg's part.
I think with Tom on there, the business that he has, where he draws from a lot of different places, I think he covers probably the northwest or the county.
Yeah, well.
I think that, yeah, he's the type of guy that if you talk to him, he's great with it. I think that's a bigger advantage for that particular area. He kind of covers the whole west and the half, I believe. Kind of possible, too. I like, yeah, Marv was one of the names that I brought up, but he had a great application.
Yeah.
I do really like the board experience and stuff that Greg had.
Me, too.
And he's been in a lot of different, yeah, I did believe he figured that hobbies and the nominated committee, and elevator board and stuff, and I was...
When I called him 15 days ago, he was, he was, at that time, it was a struggling time on the board he sat on, too. And, yeah. I saw things that Keith, too, that were, I did not know they, they are much, of course. I thought, wow, I wasn't aware of that. I don't know. I don't really decide this. Up to do with board experience, I would probably go with board experience. Great.
Yeah, it's my choice, too.
Yeah, the balance.
I like that, too, and maybe one in-person attendance, great. If you're on the road and you're trying to, you know, meetings are a little harder.
If available, I agree.
I would make a motion to nominate or...
Point.
Appoint Greg Vermaulke on the, to fill the seat of, uh, that, O'Brien County Conservation Board.
I would support that.
Motion by John, or, uh, second by John to appoint Greg. What do you say, Ray?
Greg Vermaulke. Heard, heard about a lot.
It's like, he like, Vermaulke.
That's what it looks like.
The Conservation Board, is there any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know Greg, I know his brother, but I don't know.
So, do you want to let him know that tomorrow it's meet?
Oh, tonight's the meeting.
Tonight?
Oh, tonight?
Oh, we're meeting tonight and tomorrow.
Okay, gotcha.
We live at Prairie Heritage Center right now.
You live, gotcha. It's ambitious, I mean, I heard activity at the...
I'll, uh...
I don't know if that is...
Do that.
Okay.
Somebody else. Okay.
I think I voiced it a tree. Copy the handbook. There's a lot of information in there, that I think is really good.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. If you can get there.
Yep. Yeah, we give them a whole bunch of stuff, we can have a serious meeting.
And there's, yeah, that statewide field, there's a lot of...
He said, you're...
That's where I call this, but, that's...
Works, yeah.
And then we let it...
Before we start, I'll let you...
You don't think that's like, you know, that works out that, um, you think it'd be the same with you?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's the groups.
Yeah, you'd think it'd be...
During the rain, I think, part of this is Saturday, rain heavy. And said, you want to know that the road's raining ever? Uh, grabbed a post, it's melted, and he called me, to let me make sure I told you that. So, pass that, yeah, really, uh, uh.
All right, the first item is a permit for Northwest Little Electric Law, they're going up.
They're going up Warbur Avenue. Between thirty thirty-two and twenty-eight tent, so a little two miles of buried cable on the west side. Hartley, section's eighteen, eight seventeen and twenty of Hartley County.
Are these both utility applications?
What's that?
We might do both at the same time.
Is there two?
I've got.
Back and forth, I.
Northwest RC and Windstream.
Okay, yeah. I looked at them both and thought, I bet you that camera more Windstream's that.
Yeah, you brought them both to me.
I must have made a copy of the one before I brought it to you.
Windstream's in section thirty-five of Hartley. From sixty-nine sixty-seven three eightieth street, or going to sixty-nine sixty-seven three eightieth street.
I'll make a motion to approve both those construction applications.
It's a board.
Motion by Dan, second by Sherry. Two fifty-two utility construction applications, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion cleared.
We're gonna start grading three eightieth street. Over by L thirty-six on Monday morning, got enough rain there, we think we can go outdoor.
Oh, he'll love that. He goes down that road twenty times a day.
We got that letter last night.
Yeah, we got an Airbnb there.
Stuck on it. Because the GPS was taking them to the Red and Brex.
Stronger.
Went through the snow, I guess, so just want to get that one graded up.
There's somebody calling me in today, there's a little half mile section over there too, but I think that's who it was. That lives on that road, it's gravel up to their house, and then the rest of the way is dirt.
Is that on three eighty of also, or?
Uh, three eighty of is the.
Wow, on three ninety of. Three ninetyth is a three mile stretch.
It's on three ninetyth.
Okay, so it's that last mile.
Yep, just before you get to the arch or blackout, it's dirt right there. Yeah. And then there's a little water crossing in there.
What was the name of the people that live on it?
I thought he said it, Mike.
Mike.
But I'm not sure if that's, maybe, they didn't say where it was, but that's called, but I know somebody had mentioned that later. They work in hosters and they always gotta turn around and go back, you know, a mile away every day when they go to work and stuff.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's kind of the ones nobody cares about.
Yeah, because that one is an avenue that would be a mile off. Blackout too, as far as moving.
So that is a three ninetyth. A three mile stretch.
Is the archers, three eighty is the blackout, right?
Three ninetyth is.
He said, is the arch black out, three ninetyth is the primar blackout?
The primar blackout was.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and this would be, this is four hundred.
South, south.
And then four hundred is a, I can't remember if the house was black.
Three ninetyth is the arch.
Three ninetyth is.
Three forty. Yeah, this would be a mile.
South, south.
Yeah, if you take the primar blackout and go straight.
Mile south of.
Off from L thirty-six.
Mile south would be forty, I thought. Except for the mile right off fifty-nine, I thought that was all gravel already.
No, there's a little, there's a little half mile stretch right by the archer. We'll find one south of archer. That doesn't have, it, I think.
I can press that you can just pull that out of your head very quickly, you know. There's two mile stretch here. Dirt road.
You know.
I did rob.
I know, but just to be like, oh, yeah, I know exactly where that is.
Well, yeah, get further away from primar, it's hard.
You get your directions, huh?
Yeah. I'm really going.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's what we're gonna do there, then, if you guys had a chance to give me a thought to see if we can hire an assistant.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's the right thing. I didn't say anything. Type right, what should be, what, when?
Well, I guess if you got started on it, I would shoot from having to get here about ten degrees going out the door. January.
That's good.
Assuming you get applicants.
Yeah.
Well, I think you can change that.
I don't think so.
Got a snowball, you know, ice shack.
There's a lot of fish with my name on them.
I think one thing we've kind of learned is to start early on advertising. I mean, knowing that, you can tell them that maybe the job won't start until later, but seems like it takes a while to.
Well, usually, yeah, by the time, if you give them a month or two for applications, then. That it takes you a month to find the guy and go through his process, then he's gonna give a month notice wherever he's at now. So you, I mean, it don't take a lot of time, but you burn three or four months up. Then if you wanted to go right away, I guess we got to adjust to that. If the applicant we want said, well, I'd really like to come before January, then you have to adjust for that.
Put a desk out in the hallway.
Just take out the stairway in your office.
I'm all for that.
I think start right away.
Yeah.
Well, you wish us a salary range.
Yep. Where are you, um, you know, where, where do you think we need to probably put a whole realm of this?
Well, I think from the bigger picture, I looked at what the assistants are making. Cities that have graduate assistants.
Okay.
And it was basically between sixty-five and a hundred. You know, a hundred of the guys have been there long enough, they're licensed also, probably. So I'm, you know, depending, you know, the ideal applicant would have been working somewhere for a couple of years already under license engineer. So they need to be ready to license in a couple of years here. So you're looking at picking up somebody who's probably making sixty-five, seventy now, you gotta give them some incentive to change. So that's kind of where I think you probably would need to be. Yeah.
Would that be engineer training too?
What's that?
That'd be engineer training.
Yes, he should, he'll be a graduate engineer, then hopefully has a couple of years under license engineer, because you gotta have four.
Okay.
To get a license. Yeah, hopefully they'll get some fairly homegrown young man that's trying to get back to the territory or.
That'd be good.
So, do you want to start advertising next week, beginning August, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm not, I was thinking as far as like the service group is still an add-in there right away. Who am I gonna get going, that's probably one of our better, I mean, it's free and it's, I don't know, we decided.
You have one other, right?
No.
I thought I saw something.
No, I. We waited to get the version. I don't know, we'll see all this.
Well, then, go back and look at it.
Then did it there, the young man. And they saw him at the end of the day, they were discussing the offer or something, so I'm not sure how it's going.
I don't know that.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and do that, and then if we decide. I don't know, indeed, I think is the other one. They'll get it, we'll see all. I'm not sure what that costs.
Only talk about it for years.
Well, yeah, we just will see.
See if it works, somebody out there.
That's about all I have, I should put something for me, and we got a letter here shortly.
Which is at the one south.
The north.
The north one. Okay, I didn't, I can't remember where we sat on, so if the other two are being done now. Then that one, when's that covered bridge that trusts, stop when I have it again?
We're gonna, we're gonna try to do that with federal money.
You said that, yeah.
So that one's gonna be put on the whole, and they'll. We're actually working on that one over by, so.
Bartley.
Sam's home, Bartley's. We're designing that, that's where our first, next round of federal money will go, and then.
That little bridge.
Just use a dam.
I hear. The traffic won't sit on mine so bad, but.
Well, that's one of the bad deals, you'd like to move that bridge a quarter mile further east, but you'll never be permitted to do that. They'll anger from the highest tree before they let you straighten that much channel.
Kind of follows that road and then maybe, yeah. I never went down that road once, I would've done.
Yeah, we had trouble this western, but we didn't want to go.
Exactly.
So we had to fix it.
Right.
Put a ton of dirt, a ton of river rap down there.
Pulling a ton of river rap. River rap and more river rap.
Anytime you try to make water dirt ninety degrees, definitely break that.
That's mostly the river.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the long bridge, isn't it?
Yeah, well, it's been reconstructed, it was narrow, it was shorter than when another span was added.
Well, a span on these sides was added, wasn't it?
No, just on the west at some point, but it was added, oh boy. One of the six feet, maybe even like five feet or something. Yeah, I could look it up.
That L twenty-six would be forty, intersection there looks nice. Yeah, where you guys laid that over, really improved that.
Yeah, it was nice. Oh, they did.
No, it's, yeah, it's a conflict, it took some. They already had a paper.
So who paid for that, was that a half and half?
It was a wheeling up building. Yeah, it's a wheeling up building. We would be excited if we paid.
You been laying down some crushed asphalt, Tim? And shoulders here.
Here and there.
Yeah, that's, I noticed that, that's from what we collected from there.
I think we have that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That was found out there.
Apparently, once Tom found out, we're gonna get some more, loosen up the way again.
There's plenty of intersections now that have river valves around the corners, again, in different places, the archer, highway key corner. And hosters, turning going toward hosters off L thirty-six that corner. There's one in the same one cemetery and six feet street by Sheldon, there's. I can find the rain.
It's pretty peaceful for a while.
Yeah, this one up here is. B forty and then twelve.
We're gonna redo that whole thing here, it's not going to stay for it too. Straighten that mess out, that area to widen that radius a little bit. It's on the hill, let's get it ready.
It's open, it's ten oh one.
I've got four bids.
All right.
So, get excited and they show up, right? First one I have is Christensen Brothers. Bit bond. And they have a total bid of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents. My next one is from Dixon Construction.
Are they out?
They are from Correction Village.
There's the one, they're doing the other two.
They have a bid bond. They have a total bid of five hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, and I think fifty cents.
You think fifty cents?
I think fifty cents.
Well, it's far more than twenty.
The next one I have is Graves Construction. This reminds me that next week we are moving back home, right? Where we have various appliance systems that looks. They have a bid bond. And the Graves bid is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twelve cents.
They got plenty of work. Fairly.
And the last one I have is Pram Construction out of Slaton, Minnesota.
ERA agent.
They have a bid bond. And their bid is five hundred and seventy-six thousand, three sixty-six and thirty-five cents. If I take these numbers incorrectly.
What was it? Do you have that?
Yeah, we worked out, six oh seven.
Six oh seven, okay.
Yeah, six oh seven, four fifty-five.
Assuming the math is right, right?
Yeah, the last. What did we say this morning, Paul, that one thirty, the other one thirty on the pole? That was in the five of it.
I think it was very wrong.
Yeah, it's five sixty-five, I think so too, it's a real consistent.
I see, I wonder if they asked for it.
It says on the work. I think it's the last one, the work. We gotta spoil it by that. Free subs. We gave them, we gave them, what, free winter work?
Okay.
Probably come in and tear it up sometime in the fall and start doing it.
Was it a horrible fact?
No, you know, when some of the bridges, they don't even miss anyone to tear it up because they couldn't take much over there.
Exactly. See the back row on Oak Pass, right down there.
Yep.
So still think they'll maybe do it. I mean, you had one slot, they, they might be done in August.
Well. It'll be done with us in August, but I don't know if they'll be done. In fact, they'll be done with us probably next week.
It's gonna be tough for Greenhalls, you know, coming, is what it is.
But I would, they'll get done, like, of course, Hartley's gonna be pretty hurt.
Horns usually, a couple of weeks, usually about a week after, fourth of September. I mean, you see one of you.
Yep. Yeah, there's a lot of horn gossips.
And beans.
So I heard they burnt twenty-five acres of beans over by Granville.
Oh, I haven't heard that. Yes, I've heard.
See, I thought somebody moved in, maybe a smart guy knows, but it was, it was beans drilled into.
Cornstalks.
No, till into cornstalks, and then cornstalks underneath and started burning. I've never heard that before, I've not heard that.
Molda Lee.
I still can't figure out that, because they cut all that with a signal on the pound line. Lot more gentle to the pound line, it doesn't.
We've all done it for years and years and they always share. And just cost a devil's, you know, and it feels terrible. For this, this is a max here. By, not by Hartley anymore, but. We started, yeah, so. Thirty shows, thirty shows. Yeah, we assessed our plan, our threshold, threshold versus on, back then. We used to have a plant right beside the small shop, grow from the plant that works. Otherwise, you get those butts in there, a little blood. We still have it, it's all, yeah, two plus. You know, but they eventually, the trash will be inside a little house. Have a really big hole in front of the threshold.
See, there's a couple of passes.
Absolutely, two for Sheriff Fall, he does. Yes, it can be a little bit, a little dish, it's a little different too.
Yeah, I know what this trip is, two hills along.
Yeah, a lot of ways we had it.
That seems like that's a pretty good combination to me.
As you blacken up that road, so orange ground there, yeah. As you blacken up that road, so orange ground there, yeah. I suppose you can get nailed in here if they happen, for last week, that modern condition. So...
How much rain did you get out of that?
That one went four the whole week, um, we were going out west, and we left on Tuesday, and got back on Saturday, and I had one four in age.
I think that's every, eight cans on Tuesday, and six cans on Saturday. So, I already got one break, and I got the whole month too.
Yep, yep.
I did seven tins.
Well, spot here is none like Rock Valley, it's...
Four and a half.
Huge.
Four and a half.
That's what I heard.
June had flooding, and Rock Valley had some street flooding, and even hope, had some...
Yep, yep.
So, they didn't, you can't hold that moisture.
I'll fast, if they give that over there.
The way that the water was running, it must've gone pretty fast. That can be quite a bit of time, too, for that.
Yeah, Kyle and stuff, that water, it threw more, a lot to go to.
Yeah. Especially in towns, it's, it's hard to serve the city.
They have four and a half inches of rain at Rock Valley, so maybe some...
Yeah, they had, they shut it off, and tracked the fall.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
We're driving through there Saturday morning, about time to start, I was gonna cut hay, and I go, oh, I left it four gaps, it was gonna rain, uh, maybe I'll just wait, then we drove up to some falls, and... Yeah, we hit that, got there, the water, and all over my perfect course.
She must've come pretty hard, or they're not as dry as us, because I'm pretty sure I could take four and a half inches, or it took three or four hours.
I think it came pretty fast, I mean, it was just four, it was like a sun high for a little while. Because we were gonna, we looked over Rock Valley, and it was dark, and I said, let's just go north.
They canceled the base of Saturday night. And they, because they had rain and whatnot, and they were muddy, so Sunday afternoon they haved. And it was still kind of muddy, but they're like watering the chat, and by the end, dust and... I mean, like, that's just a surprise. I mean, it's just that dry.
We left last, right, so, we had, we canceled four of that, so, we showered four.
Last one we had, Christians, is working.
They do, it's finished, huh?
Oh, that, that wasn't, yep.
So, they might just, maybe that girl just comes, I mean, you can't drag her feet, maybe there's gonna come right down here, do this on the...
Not an issue with that, is it?
No, well, fine, but it's...
Do they look cranes in this?
Yeah, cranes that they use on that, or do you use to hold that all the best of it?
That's all pretty, they're supposed to ride a pile.
Yeah, they'll swing it all, rebar off. Yeah, I think they all got, need another piece or two of equipment off, and we're a lot more ready right there.
Did you get the letter off the mailbox, or you must've sent it to all the supervisors, too, on the...
Yeah, I talked to them yesterday, I think we have, I think we're here.
I know that's engineer.
Oh, really, you didn't say, well, I got one, I called Darryl yesterday and asked if they have any, because he's sitting on, they've contacted you, so they will sit this, and we'll be going with us.
Okay.
I didn't know, personally, but, uh, I suppose maybe I do, I talked to, maybe I saw, maybe I...
Probably delivered you rail.
Maybe, I could, well, yeah, three, four, that's like three.
Will you give me one of those?
He was, uh, oh, okay. Yep, have you ever gotten those, that, you know?
No.
Well, I've been, a lot of, it's part, part really good.
I look at these.
Did they work, oh, that was out of Blue, it was shot down here, or, or, I'm surprised, I didn't, or the hills, and, uh...
I talked to your... Well, I... So, appreciated.
We were out, yeah, we stayed in a house above the service. It was fine.
How was it going out there, looking dry, it looked like?
Oh, good, yeah.
Looked good?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I had been told that, but... Lots, lush.
Really?
They said maybe it was...
I think it's great.
I got a cousin that ranches between Chamberlain and... And he, a few, a couple of weeks ago, brought a bunch of cows home, put them on his home place pasture, went up two days later, checked up sixteen were dead.
What?
Dead yet?
Huh? Water, boys, water evaporates so bad in that pond that the salin, there was three chemicals in there, with a test of the water, that were above toxic, so, he was gonna go, he went over another pasture, he's gonna run it in there, but he thought it was against the water, before he did, there was no water in that, and... So, they're drying hard today.
Well, there was a couple of stretches, and it might have been...
That was last the table?
North of you, in the north, thirty miles north, after you...
There's some spots that were brown, but I mean, it's all the, that's usually, the crop, the, the, it's usually, yes, he does correctly, but, and all the way out to Black Hills, it never, every day I was out there, late at night, somewhere.
Neil did, it was, it all looked great all the way out on Highway forty, and then we came back on the forty-six, when I pulled the dam, like, I found, and then we came back on forty-six, and that by Scotland, so...
They've been good, 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 right here.
Yeah, Ford was just busting out something there.
Probably, that's maybe that's solid dirt or whatever, solid coal instead.
Well, they got, they said north of there.
North solid coal.
I think that's the couple of spots, they, they froze.
The baches were all green, but they had cows out, but you didn't see any, they said, and I was all, so, I don't know if they were never ending up for much, but, you know, you're usual.
Yeah, you know, I saw some, but not a huge amount.
Not a huge amount, yeah.
We're gonna go up to Delston, last week.
Okay, so, I'll do there, be out that way, or...
Well, I think we're gonna run up through North Delston.
I would, too.
I, I wanna go to, I've never been to Customs Last Stand, I'm gonna see that.
Oh, yeah, or possibly live somewhere else if we get western, or, or, used to be, drive, for an hour, and I not see a light, anything, traffic, or...
I've been through there, and it's a bitch, it's hard, you can't see, there's not lights anywhere.
We used to drive, uh, our low camp, we owned caddies, we put on more of those, and, uh, we had this track out there, God, I'm gonna, I swear, if I had a good insulated house, that's where I'd be, out here, outside.
Didn't have to go anywhere.
Yeah, to go anywhere away. That's why I...
Cook City, yeah, yeah, taking a little, very too fast, going around the curbs and there too. Yep, they say that's one of the best all recycle rides, and kinda just like, it's a show.
We came out west, yeah, we're still living up, this is back in pretty much a lot, we're not really going to anymore. We had to go to Cook City, I had to, it's a certification there. So, maybe you had to build out in September, perhaps a crowd, in summer, crowd, just one, right? And we used to park, that year, twenty-seven years ago, we had our first game, and then I was there. It was good, I really enjoyed it, and I wasn't really drought, I expected it to be, to really be, I expected way more people.
It wasn't too bad.
No. I mean, it was full, but, I mean, I had heard a story, he said, wait, my, I was, never had, not one, right? Not one, right?
I kind of figured it wouldn't be for the color, because nobody did anything last year, so everybody burned and just...
I was talking to a child over there, and my daughters were there, of course, I was stuck in that, and, uh, somebody, we were talking about, uh, our kids, and they all had to get out, and he said, I said, how about last year? I said, sorry, he said, you know, you take a weather, like, a little dance out, so you just, like, the home place, the country, or... Should they be using, because they can't, you know, that's why they're, and they're, just like everywhere else. So, this was just, I created her own.
Took the secondary or third, buy something from Eaton Corporation?
I didn't know, I didn't know there were still, but...
Why would they buy that directly?
Pretty much buy everything, yeah, their job.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but, um...
You did, yeah. There's some, I don't use it.
Yeah, it's, uh...
Oh, yeah. I heard, I heard about them, Eaton Legal.
Is it ours?
I don't know what category it's under.
I don't think so.
I wouldn't even know how you go about buying something for reasons.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's not the same way?
Yeah.
I saw that one, I must've guessed that one.
You don't know any antitude?
Dirty side.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, not always.
You said, what is it?
What's that?
What's the name of, it says Eaton?
It's on page three. It says Eaton Corporation. Vendor, I feel, all that's vendor, not Eaton. Thirty-five ninety-three.
It's like me, battery. This is U P, this is U P F battery backup, I bet that's the jail.
Oh.
Failed car, I mean, you don't see it, but, you know, pulled it on.
Nice feed, I vote.
You can ask.
I mean, small brand, and then...
If they wanted to know, Eaton Corporation?
The, 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 the bottom row.
Uh, I believe that's the, uh, jail.
They had a red one or a gray one, I had no choice.
Creamy, sure they had a red one, but, uh...
Creamy, people say, still less than red.
I'm not saying red.
One big, about forty-six, three, something like that.
The blue one's about eighty-five.
You're right.
You remember?
That may be...
Me and my brothers went up for a hand operation, so me and the son are looking for, uh...
That may be the company.
Six, yeah, six, oh.
Start the case?
Yeah. K R A, you know, I'm being worried that long.
We had to spot him here a few weeks ago.
Oh, yeah, that's conservation, I think, um, they were doing some design work, or, um, to do some refurbishing, like, displays at the nature center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. The B O S card that got me, and I was, I didn't think about for a second, and I was like, board of supervisors, we're, we got, or... What?
Yeah, part of it all, on scratch, but I'm fine. Actually, Kiderbro is coming, yep. Get some of that undergrowth, though.
Parents live, um, probably. One north and a half mile, I bet.
Yeah, okay.
So, I've worked with you, with the partners.
Well, it's out there. Um, it's not very, well, you have, also, it's the inmates, and some electric, like, so down.
Yeah, sure, it's good.
Somebody from the campground. In an air conditioner unit, in one of the cabins, was hit or miss, but it was like in Los McEvans, so I was like...
Oh, and there's Armadillo.
Armadillo?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. It was all, it was the craziest thing, some guys left, like, July third, and, well, that was actually one, it's like, it's a situation, I wonder if it's live. Everywhere, and back over center. Now, there's people that try to make camp sites the Tuesday before, I never been this far.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hey, go inside, can you handle it, but basically, is that allowed to do, or, there's something in the spot?
Thank you.
Had a couple of, yeah. Don't know, that's we've talked, friends, I'm not sure that after, you know, stay here, two days later, they're like, oh, my God, it's very true.
Oh, okay.
That's awful. Always have, I think, they come down from the apples.
Yeah.
It's got, what's that, cost to do the radiuses, and block that wood, and widen it out.
Do they have to put down ones, pretty neat, then, too?
Or, just, just breaks out, and I don't know.
Did you do that all with the asphalt, then, or did they have to concrete, like, that's all?
Someone in the state ran around them ones over there, and they took that detour, is that what they did, they...
They did, yeah.
Or they just do a temporary layover?
Well, they went through it.
Did they?
And they did that, when they did that on B twenty-four, they was kind of, the state did that, detour, they schemed, a lot.
And that's what makes right out here, but, you don't wanna think about it anymore.
Now, there were some of them, that, somewhere else, I'd be able to dig, and they wiped it, a lot of them. Couple of people, we all take a thing, but, if you didn't know, you also got that big one there, aren't you? They did a bridge up there, and they still can't stay on the road.
Lose the giant stuff.
That's narrow, when you come into the...
Please, like, lose the giant stuffed buck.
Twenty-three foot wide road, and then you're going around the inside curb, and then you turn, because you need, there's another car tunnel.
Oh, yeah. Took me a minute, too. Don't get rid of stuffed buck.
That toys over, or you...
Even if it's not the middle, so, it'll be there. It's kinda like you go again. It's gonna stay, so, if you go down to the fire, they have all their design boards out there, the license keys are...
So this two hundred comes in at nine, but it's
right. And that's why the endowment is gonna be big because people can put into that right now to help build that.
For trucks. Trucks are huge part of that.
I think there's more excitement building, so I think dollars are a little better than hundreds.
Well, yeah, somebody said.
Yeah.
And I Yeah. No, that would be good because there is definitely so. Hopefully I write a check.
They're having a hard time getting primed, Tom, but the numbers all came out as rep. So I recommend if we approve the Christian Brothers, they'll bring it, she just doesn't.
Okay. Thanks. Support.
Watch it by John, so get my sharing to prove the bit. Then for the Christians and brothers and cheerleaders, all the babies sad. All hopes.
And God for his church.
Yep, concrete month. I totally hear that, too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This thing is here.
Oh, you certainly want to share.
I'll just stay.
And if you don't need me to show a certain page, let me know because I have those screens.
We'll kind of generally just be going, going through.
Okay.
And everybody's got a copy.
Yes, it could go.
Okay, it's ten thirty. We'll go ahead and start the drainage, like number five completion hearing. Do you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. So I'm Colin Klingbile with Fulton Mank. Actually, when this project kind of started, that FEMA repairs, that's the project we're talking about here. It was myself and Don Hettler that were working on this project and last June he retired, so I kind of took over supervision of the project and brought it to this point. So if I haven't met any of you before, that's who I am. So, um, but this is for the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen FEMA damage repairs. And as I understand, there was a repair, major repair project that was done on this, this ditch a few years back. And then twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, there was, as we all know, a lot of water, a lot of flooding, and those banks were very susceptible and had a blew them out, caused a lot of damage. And it happened during FEMA declared disaster periods, so it was eligible for assistance through FEMA. And so we went through the process of applying for the funding and they would pay eighty-five percent of the cost of the repairs. That's seventy-five percent federal share and ten percent from the state. So that's just kind of a little bit of a background of it. We, we bid the project last, I believe it was last February. And we got five bids and by the way, y'all got this report, I'm kind of just gonna be roughly going through it. You can track with that. And basically, there's, um, there's three pages of report and then there's some attachments on the back. Different letters and table of recommended crop damage compensation. And then the back, several pages are maps that show, highlighted in different colors, what we had measured for acres as far as crop damages go. So I'll kind of be referencing those as I, as I go through this. There was five bids. It was bid in March tenth, twenty twenty. King excavation, a cylinder got the low bid at five hundred ninety-two thousand or almost five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, which was fifty-three thousand lower than the next highest bid. We had estimated quite a bit higher than that at eight hundred sixty-two thousand. So they were, we had several good bids and as we understood it, there was a lot of competition between different suppliers of riprap and erosion control blanket that drove that price down at the end. So that was good. The final contract amount, so there was, it was five hundred ninety-three thousand is what they bid, final contract amount, a little over five hundred sixty-three thousand. So it dropped almost thirty thousand. A big part of that was the erosion control blanket. What we had for an estimated quantity in the bid was not as much as they needed to actually put in. So that was a significant drop in the, in the cost of the project for that. So we're at, compared to the, our original estimate, we're at sixty-five point three percent of that estimate. And the district currently holds ten percent retainage of fifty-six thousand, a little over fifty-six thousand dollars from the contractor. So then the next part we've got here is liquidated damages. So when it was bid and the contract assigned, the completion date was set at November sixth of twenty twenty. They didn't actually complete the project until May of this year construction. So there's a significant delay in completion. And you can read the nitty gritty details, but I'll kind of try to just briefly summarize what happened. So the first, the first major thing was when, when they got the low bid. So the process that we go through is, all right, us as the engineers, we recommend to award the contract. And we did recommend to award the contract to this contractor. And it was based on conversations we had with them and things that they said they were gonna do. For example, that they were gonna have four people working on site at all times, basically. And when they actually did start, which was later than what they, they had said that they were gonna start in April, they didn't actually get out there until the end of June. And then when they did start, they only had one guy out there working for at least a month, at which point we sent a letter expressing concern because we could tell, I mean, you can see how much riprap was put in and the progress and just projected out to the completion date. We could see that at that pace, they were not gonna get it done. So we sent them a letter saying, you're not gonna get it done on time. What are you gonna do? Well, they sent them, they put another excavator out there with another guy to do riprap. And that sped them up some, but it was still slower than it needed to be. They did get the riprap done by the completion date, but the erosion control blanket was about half done for the project at the time of the completion date. So they started a couple of months late, later than they said they were going to, and there was good weather. We were told, I tried to contact them several times and it was hard to get an answer back from them, but when we did get an answer, it was that they were swamped with field tile work. So they were, basically what they were saying was they were off doing other things, which is not a legitimate excuse for, for this project to be not working on it. Um, so they started in late June and then, as I was saying, progress was slow. We had to keep pushing them. You're not gonna make it if you don't, if you don't take action here and get more people on site working on this. And they took small actions, but it wasn't, wasn't enough to get it done. And so, and then as of November sixth, they had the riprap done, but there was a lot of stuff left. Well, they pulled off the project. And as I understand it, they had bid on a river, a river restoration project in Palo Alto County that had a completion date of December sixth. And they had that bid last fall and they bid on it and got that project. So they pulled off this project and went to that project. And let that work remain. Well, they still didn't have the work done. And so we, the board directed me to contact their bonding company because there's, with a contract like this, they have a performance bond. And if they don't perform, you can call that bond. So we just wanted to let the bonding company know that we're having these issues and see if they can put some pressure on. They did come back in December for a couple of weeks and they were lucky to have weather good enough to keep working in December. And then the blizzard around the week of Christmas kind of put them out of business for the rest of the winter. Then this spring, again, they had good weather that they could have got out there pretty early, like in March. And they weren't coming. I contacted them, reminded them, need to get this done, get out here as soon as possible. They weren't, they didn't show up, they didn't show up. And finally, we talked about and the board sent them a letter about, it's a drainage code section about abandonment of work. And it essentially, and Jim, if you want to add anything to this, you can, but essentially it's sending them a certified letter saying, you get here in ten days and start working or you're done, basically. We can go and bid it out, bid the remaining work out to somebody else. And if there's additional costs because of that, that can be, um, you please, basically. So they did come back after they got that letter and started working. And I'm, I'm going into the second page here. But they came back and they started working and they, they finished in the middle of May. Now their actual final completion date where we certified completion was May twenty-first of twenty twenty-one, but our contract states that their contractual obligation is to be substantially complete, it's substantial completion. And so to us, they had the riprap and the erosion control blanket and these major things done, they did by about the fourteenth of May. They did have some additional rock cleanup. We had to, we had them cleaning up different stretches of the ditch and they finished that on May twenty-first. So all total, that's a hundred and eighty-nine days late and we've got eligible liquidated damages. They were setting the contract at five hundred dollars a day. And that's, I don't think I even put that in the report, what that amount is. I guess for the winter timeframe, and it could be argued either way, but I'd recommend taking off ninety days of that because they weren't gonna be able to work in the winter. So that brings us down to ninety-nine days, which would be forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars as eligible liquidated damages for late completion. But one thing to keep in mind with liquidated damages is it's not, it's not equivalent to a penalty. It's not to penalize the contractor for being late. It has to be tied to actual damages to the district. And so I went through in this report and there's three different things that we can make an estimate of what actual damages were to the district, to the landowners in the district for completing a work this much late. One of them was for additional engineering services. So we had to do more things, be out there more for an extended period of time, keep coming. And there was an additional twelve thousand dollars for that after November sixth of twenty twenty, which was the contract completion date. We have not, on the twenty eighteen FEMA work, we have not received the funding from FEMA and how drainage district projects work is like the engineers, myself and the contractor are getting paid as we go. And if there's not funds in the district's bank account, so to speak, then drainage warrants are issued and that's accruing interest at five And because the project, I was skipping to the next one, actually, but because FEMA, because the project wasn't done, that delayed FEMA getting us the, the funding, which meant there's a higher balance in that account, which means more interest is being paid. So we've got another fourteen thousand there. And then the last thing is if it would have been done in November, this, it could have been all resolved and the dollars could have been levied this spring. Well, now we're past the point where we can levy this year. And so that's gonna have to wait another year. And so it's accruing interest at five percent. So that's another, it's a smaller amount because I took off the amount that FEMA will be paying. And then running that total through a year. And so that's another six thousand dollars. So for actual, as far as actual damages go, I've got an estimate of thirty three thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents. And so we have this maximum eligible liquidated damages of forty-nine thousand five hundred, but I've got actual damages of thirty-three thousand, a little over thirty-three thousand. So I guess, and I emphasize that the board has discretion here on how much you want to do as far as liquidated damages. I kind of set the parameters up here for discussion. And maybe now is probably the point in time, we do have a, a letter from the contractors. Is this the right time to read that, Jim?
I would. So then the board will get everything together, not this year?
Yep. So I'll just go ahead and read this, this off. To whom it may concern on the Board of Supervisors. After reading the completion letter from Colin with Fulton Mank, we feel the need to voice our concerns and what we feel is our side to the situation. First of all, twenty twenty was a very difficult time for every profession, whether a factory, restaurant, or small company like ours. It also did not help to have an inspector who was one side of the department. He made it impossible to work with and we requested several times to have someone other than that inspector and was denied a reasonable inspector. We feel that we were not listened to and only the inspector was. Other than a percentage of the erosion control blanket and two tile extensions, the project was completed on time, even due to hardships associated due to COVID. Every other profession had waivers and forgiveness on projects not being done or completed on time due to lack of employees and materials due to COVID. When our company agreed to a timeline, no one knew that COVID would be such a disaster to everyone. Some of our challenges due to COVID nineteen were getting erosion control blanket delivered on a timely, timely manner, matter and finding willing, able and capable manpower for the installation of the blanket as employees were scared and chose to quarantine. Please take note of the difference in the bid amount versus the actual amount paid to us, King Excavation. The difference between the two figures is a large savings to Orion County and a minus to our payment. This comes from a few factors unpaid to us that will not be discussed at this time, but leaving open for later discussions. We are unable to be present at the meeting as we were not notified with enough time to reschedule previously scheduled events so we could attend the completion hearing. We ask that you take notice that it is unfair, in our opinion, to punish us for COVID-related pushbacks on a project when all other companies have leniency from COVID effects. So that was, that's the email that they sent. Um, just a few points, I guess I want to make. Just a few points, I guess, I want to make on that. This is the, we've been communicating with them and working with them this whole time. This is the first time that they've ever mentioned that COVID was a sort of a problem. And I know, and I told you all that when they weren't there at different times, what we were told is, and what we figured out, is that they were off working on different work. So saying that COVID is, is the excuse here at the end, to me, doesn't carry as much weight as it would have if they had been talking about it all the way along and communicating with us that that was a problem. I know this spring, when they came back to work, they did have a little bit of problem finding erosion control blanket, but they were working on a different project, and they stopped that project. And then they expected to just get it right away. They could have ordered it in the meantime, and they had all winter to order it ahead, and they knew what they were going to need. So to me, even that isn't a legitimate excuse. Like it, it may have taken them a week or something to get erosion control blanket. It wasn't months and months or anything like that. And in 2020, there was, I never heard any issues about getting erosion control blanket.
Didn't you just say they bid another project?
Yes.
Later on, I mean?
Last, last fall, they bid another project that had a completion date for last December.
COVID was such a problem, why did you bid on another project?
Yeah, that's a good point.
One, one other point in this, large savings to O'Brien County, no outside savings to O'Brien County, it's a savings to the drainage district.
I agree. Well, and it's not, it's not even that. Yeah, it's not savings.
You have more money to do it a year later.
Well, and what he's, what they're referring to there is that, on the first page of the report, the bid was, the bid was $590,000, and then the final is like $560,000. But they're only, they only get paid for the work that they actually do. It's, it's very clear when we do bids that it's, the work items are estimated quantities. And they only get paid for actual work done. It's not, it's not a lump sum thing, and if you just do the work, you get that amount of money. And like I said, we didn't know exactly how much erosion control blanket there would need to be placed. The bank height and everything varies all the way along the ditch. So we made our best estimate and had measurements taken as the project progressed, and that they were paid based on what they actually installed. So it, it's not even a cost savings at all. They're getting paid for the work that they actually did.
And in that too, correct me if I'm wrong, but we switched from a native grass species to a grown grass. So that's where some of the savings came to, so they're receiving a cheaper fee.
Yeah, that's true, you're right.
Colin, was there in fact a problem with the inspector?
There was, so the first time that I heard that they had a problem with the inspector was November 9th. It was three days after the project completion date. When I let them know, it was in response to me letting them know that you're at your completion date's passed, and just a reminder, $500 a day is the contract eligible liquidated damages. And then they kind of shot back this thing about him. But there was, there's been times since then that they've tried to tell me that he was too nitpicky or just different things like that. But in one email, it even said that he was pointing to the plans over common sense or something like that. But that's his, that's his job.
Inspector's job?
It's his, yes.
To make certain that the contractor complies with the engineer's specifications and plans.
Yes.
And I, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
He doesn't go outside your plans and specifications, he just enforces that.
Yep. And the only, there was times where there was claims made by different sides. And there was one time where the inspector, he was asking them to redo something, and they said, no, we already redid it. It was a confusion about where it was at. I went out and looked at it, and okay, it was done correctly and it was fine. That's the only thing that I'm aware of where there was any sort of an issue. Other than that, when we had, before this last pay estimate, we had, there was kind of an argument about fill behind riprap. And Jason was saying that they had done that all along. And, and he gave a couple of specific locations where he claimed they did that. And I, I mean, we, we looked into it. We went out there and checked it out after the fact, and it wasn't. One specific spot was right at the, right at the beginning of the project, furthest downstream. We ordered an additional 300 feet of bank shaping, which there's no bank fill with, with the bank shaping, it's just shaping. The only time there's bank fill is under riprap. So it was blown way out, and you fill the channel back. So I'm placing the riprap, so it's not sitting way off the center. And there was, he claimed that there was six feet wide of bank fill that they did in that whole stretch. Well, that wasn't the case. So they didn't like the inspector, but the inspector was making sure that they were doing what they were supposed to be doing and getting, that's, that's his job, like you said.
And I met him out there a number of times, and he is very professional. He always referred to the plans, said this is what it's supposed to be. These are the specs, this is why it's not to spec, or this is why it is. So he didn't change anything, he went by the report, and he handled it very well, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, obviously, you did listen more science to Inspector Man, King Excavation, if you did agree that they had done what they had done in one portion, you know, so.
And let's see, what other? I guess there's really not a whole, whole lot more to say about that stuff. They said, we requested several times to have someone other than that inspector. The only time we actually had a request like that was, like I said, November 9th.
So in the end, it's the $56,000 and chain drainage minus the $33,000?
That's, yeah, that's what it, it would be if, if the board, if you accept this, yes.
Let me just make one quick comment on the $32,000. I have reviewed, I'm sorry for the record, I'm Jim Hudson, drainage attorney from Pocahontas. I reviewed the engineer's report and the way he has computed it. And it's important to note that even though you have what's called liquidated damages in a contract, in order to enforce that clause, the courts, when they review it, require that the damages be actual damages, not computed damages, but that compensates the district for actual loss. Colin has computed actual loss and time value, interest, additional interest paid by the district. So I believe that the computation at the $33,000 is a good computation. And even if King were to appeal, if we decide that today, I don't think they would be successful in district part. And that's the standard that you need to, you'd like to maybe whack them a little bit more for being harmed, but that isn't what you do with liquidated damages. There's a bit of a misconception there. It is a punishment, it's actual damages you're collecting. Other than that, I mean, I recommend you follow the industry. It's my recommendation for.
I don't know what else we base it on.
The one other thing I'll mention is that just with our own, my own experience in other projects that have been going on in different counties, none of them have had a COVID-related extension or delay. There was, there was a delay. One, one contractor that we were working with had an employee that got COVID. And they delayed, they kind of had to delay by a month, but they still completed the project. When they came back, they still got it done by the completion date. So we haven't seen that, at least in the projects that I've been involved with this past company here. But at the same time, if there was legitimately delays due to COVID, I think that, that would be legitimate. But I just, I don't feel it is.
Well, they're saying that it is, but they're looking at another industry where there might have been delays as their excuse if they're on it.
Well, and for them, if they are, they're showing us a late to our project because they're working on other projects, then they're not having a COVID delay. If they're leaving our project to go to another project they bid, that's not a COVID delay. And that is not a legitimate excuse in my mind.
Yep, I agree.
And you worked diligently trying to get them out there on time. And they were difficult to get ahold of, to say the least.
Yeah, we were, we, first thing we do before we actually let them go out there is have a pre-construction meeting. And I contacted them time after time after time, when do you want to have this, do you want to get going? And very little response, and we couldn't get it in until, it was two months of just me saying we need to have this pre-construction meeting so you can actually go. Yeah, the communication was lacking.
And we, as a board, were constantly aware of it, but you, and you also.
If they'd been on the job as they should have been, they wouldn't have had any problems at all.
Yeah.
Basically.
So in my mind, I think we accept Colin's report as is because those are sound numbers with actual calculated damages. So I think.
But what, I mean, do we need to go on to the?
Yeah.
The Colin damage?
Yeah.
That's kind of one area of discussion for today. And if we're done with the discussion there, you're comfortable with where we're at with that, and we move on to the damage compensation. So when, when they were out there, of course, they're working along the ditch, and they're hauling 13,000 tons of riprap up and down the ditch. So there was, there was crop damages. And this is a drainage, a drainage ditch, so there's, there's existing right of way along that ditch. And within that right of way, damage, there's, damage compensation is not eligible. So, and that's about 15 feet out from the top of bank, just roughly along the ditch. So within that first 15 feet, if there was damage done, that's not eligible for compensation. But everything outside of that is. And just to kind of go through how I set up, at least for my recommendations for crop damages. So for corn, I use the O'Brien County 2020 average yield of 201 bushels an acre, which is on the Ag Decision Maker website. And then an average price of $5.94 a bushel. That's from January 1st until around now, but I didn't update it just yesterday, a couple of weeks ago or something. So $5.94 a bushel. And then for soybeans, similar type procedure. 2020 average soybean yield for O'Brien County, 61 bushels an acre. And then $14.42 a bushel. Price there. And then for buffer, CRP, hay, ground, we've got a recommendation of $300 an acre for damages. For CRP, and none of the grass, ground, or anything was reestablished by the contract. And we don't do that typically because we don't really know if it's in CRP or not. And then those CRP contracts can be different on what, if you have to reestablish, what they require you to do. And so we just stay out of that. But we've, we've got $300 an acre damage to start. But we do recommend that for a reasonable time into the future, the board accept claims for reseeding costs if their cost proves higher. So we don't know exactly what that'll be, and it could be different for different landowners. But we're starting at $300 an acre. And that should be pretty close to covering it in most cases. Then we've got a well lid next to the ditch. The contractor ran over this lid to the well, broke it. And it's, it's on the property of Randy and Rhonda Menke. And I do, there's a correction here in this report. I said that this should be, $150 should be paid to Larry Hennings, but it's on Randy's, Randy and Rhonda's property, so it should be paid to them. So that's, that's a correction to this. I guess I had understood it that it was your well there.
I thought it's the lease to the well.
No, it's my well, I have lease to the well.
He has lease. So who, who should it, who should the tenant go to? You're both here, that's, that makes it easier.
All we need is a new lid. He broke it, the contractor broke it. He said he was going to get another, yeah, of course.
What I, yeah, what I was told is that they had a lid, and then they brought it over, and then it was too small. So then they didn't do it. So that, I've got $150 in here for, for putting a new one on. But however, however you guys want to do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it. I mean, we use the $150 if you will.
Yeah, who you want the check to go to?
Obviously, it's him, it's his well, actually.
Okay, all right, so keep it, keep it the same. That's what I had in the report. Okay, and then that's about it for the report, other than just, we've got this last paragraph here about payment to tenants. We know that there's landowners of crop lands and stuff where there's different people farming them, but we don't know who all is doing that. So by default, the payment is sent to the landowner, and then they deal with it, they work it out from there. Let's see. It's our understanding that the board made direct payments to be made in the name of the owner and tenant jointly. So if they make the request to do that, put both their names on the check. But they would have to ask for that. So other than that, that's kind of it for the report here. Let's see. And I suppose we can just start going, well, before we do the, go into some of the claims that were filed, is there any discussion or questions on what we've covered so far? Or issues made with the, the compensation for the crop damages? Like the way I calculated corn, soybean, and the, and the buffer? Yeah, sure.
I got the best interest in the south of 300th Street. It's a property that I rented from a farmer. North a half mile to this property, we're talking about the well, there's really no issues there with the well. On the south side, I, I was understood that all the drainage tubes, the tin whistles, I call them, that were pushed down and broke, came off, whatever, were to be fixed or replaced. Is that correct?
Well, there's a little bit of a long answer to that, Randy. I'll try to, I'll try to break it down. But for FEMA eligibility, we had to have all of those documented before we started the project. And so only the ones that we had documented with FEMA, and it's possible that a few were missed, that we couldn't, because most of this observation was done, we flew it with a drone, and then watched the video. Instead of, it's faster than walking every inch of that and looking for them. But there's a possibility that we missed a few. And we did find that. There was a couple, and I had... There was a couple, and I had asked the board about that pretty early on in the project. If we find some of these tile outlets that aren't, that we didn't report to FEMA ahead of time, should we go ahead and replace those? And it was kind of a yes, but if it gets to be too many, let's talk more about it. And so, there was at least a couple that were done that way. But it's possible that, that some were missed, and that.
So, I met with your coworker that retired last summer because he had heard that we had some issues that weren't being fixed. And he, he remarked that. And I don't know whether, but my biggest issue is there was a tile that the tin whistle was gone from the play. It was hard to see where the tile was, but there was a tile sticking in the creek. So, when they came with the riprap, the operator didn't see it. He covered it up in rock. And I approached him later, and I said, there's a tile that comes out right here, it brings me and another neighbor.
Yep.
And of course, I was concerned. Well, we went into the dry here, so whoever saw it. So, they tried to fix it that fall. They came back last spring and attempted to find it again. I had a map, I, I tried to tell them about where it was. They couldn't, they couldn't find it.
Yep.
So, they pushed it all shut, put the rock back along the creek, and they left. Now, I gotta, that tile has to dry and drain at some point. We had weather, obviously, would probably show up. But that's my bigger concern, is that's, that's been covered up and it doesn't work.
Well, and, yeah, I was aware of that, and I know they were, they went and tried to find that and couldn't find it. And at that, I wasn't gonna have to just keep looking forever. So, I told, I told them it was okay to stop. What I, there is a one-year warranty period. And that's, that's what I would recommend. As soon as you find that or see that cause an issue, and you know where it's at, document that, bring that to the board, and we can make a warranty claim. And the contractor is responsible for repairing that.
So, if, of course, it's got crop in it now, and it's not really, gives nothing during, does fall? If we, is that my job to try and find it, get it put back in the creek like it was?
No.
My job, or am I just supposed to be? I mean, how are we supposed to remedy it?
Report it, report it to the board, and we can make a warranty claim on the contractor, and they're responsible under the contract to come back and fix that.
And that doesn't, the one year doesn't start till the completion year is done, correct?
Um, I would have to look at the contract itself. I'm not positive on when that, that time period starts. But it's not from, it's not from last November.
No.
It's, it's for sure until when they completed the work. So, mid-May would be the earliest time that it could, that, that ticker could start for that year-long warranty period. And it could be today. I, I'd have to look at the actual contract to, I don't have that with me, but to confirm. So, through, at least through next mid-May, there's a, there's a warranty period there. So, if you observe that, let the board know right away, and make the warranty claim on that, on that tile. I guess that was my thought, is that rather than just having to dig around forever, we gotta draw the line somewhere, and so we can wait and see if it, if it shows up, and then we know where it's at, and then they can dig it up. Is that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, we all know with our weather pattern changes, and we go back to normal, wherever that is, we'll have issues then with a gap off the tile. I mean, I guess I could go down there, come fall and the crop is off, and try and relocate. I've got maps, but those aren't GPS maps. But I, I think I could find it, but.
How, how deep is it in that area?
Four or five feet.
Four or five feet?
Most of the thing.
Possibly it could be probed or something. If, if you find it before, like, if you probe it and find it, then go ahead and do the same warranty. You don't have to wait until it rains. I just thought if you can't, if you don't, if we don't know where it's at, and when it rains, it would show up, and then we'd know. And then they could take action at that point. But if you find it before that, if you can probe it and find where it's at, then go ahead and make that.
What you're saying is that it's probably up to me to find it, locate it, and then to be corrected into the creek.
Yeah.
I guess.
So, if he doesn't find it, tell him two years from now?
Then that warranty period's over.
But he's still gonna come here to have, to notify the board, right?
Yes. There wouldn't be a warranty claim at that point in time. It would be a, a minor repair.
But at that point, then, the board, okay, they're going to send someone out there to fix it.
In district project.
Yes.
Maybe you know the general location, well, they just worked my down back, go back, go out, find it, and then fix it. Fix it, I don't believe I'm not, uh.
Exactly. How it's going? Well, yeah, and that's the thing. They, they did a lot of digging in there, looking for it, and they weren't able to find it. And so, basically, they had spent enough time on it where I figured, well, I don't know how much time we have, we just keep looking for this.
I, I wanted to help them, we were in the middle of planning.
Yeah.
I saw that they were back, they were looking, they were attempting to find it. I wanted to go over there, of course, and try and guide them with my knowledge, but I just didn't have time for that.
Yeah.
Are we optimistic to think they'll come back? And one-year warranty?
Um.
Or, and if that happens?
They're bound under that contract still for that warranty period. I, I've never dealt with somebody not coming back for that warranty, but there would be repercussions for that if they didn't come back. That, you ever dealt with something like that, Jim, when they didn't come back for the warranty claim?
No, I haven't, but I would suggest that the bond company, they put some good pressure on it.
Okay, I believe that performance bond would still be covering the warranty period. I have dealt with that specifically.
The bond company will release their bond once you finish today, wait 30 days. But they probably have some sort of holdback for some contingencies just like this if there's a claim filed under warranty. And that's all they would pay for the warranty claim, I would think. I've never had before. How much money are you talking about for these extensions? Whistles, like you call them?
I've got, I've got three in our area. Same things what he's got, they're floating, I mean, they're covered up.
That they covered up?
I have the one that's covered up. I got, I've got an eight-inch that comes in that, that drains probably, my grain tannins, make, or sniff quarter of this patterned tile. Takes a lot of water, and it won't show up probably until, like Randy said, we get some water and it starts seeping out. But who's gonna be responsible for paying that, and I gonna be, if I don't find it for a year?
Well, this has got to get to the point where we almost need to do that warranty claim sooner rather than later. I wasn't aware of your, your three until today.
Well, yeah, I, I didn't mark them all three in there, but, you know, I think there's a couple more, but I haven't, I haven't located them yet.
Well, and that's.
And I, when he, when he done the 10-inch coming in there, we went last winter. Our tile out last, last winter was a plastic pipe laying off the creek. Didn't even have a tin whistle on it. If we had another flood, like, that, that piece of plastic pipe would have been down in 18.
Right.
And that should have never been left like that. And I don't have any, any animal guards. I think there were supposed to be animal guards on the tin whistle. I've got two.
I don't, I don't think we had it in our plans to require animal guards on the, on the tile outlets. So, if they were putting them on, some of them, I mean, that's.
Why did they put them on a couple of them and not on all?
I have, I have no idea.
To me, that's suggesting that I'm supposed to put them on, otherwise you would have them all on.
If, if we would, if we make a warranty claim for them to come and put those outlets in, and it ends up that there's some that they don't find, or they're not there, that, that'll get a little bit more sticky, because then they came out there based on this claim. They would probably need to get compensated for that sort of thing, if that happened. I'm not saying I don't believe you, but if that ended up happening, that, that would be a little bit more sticky. But if there's four of them out there, we probably should make a warranty claim and have them come back out and get those, get those fixed. And if you guys can, if you can help, approximate locations or flag them off, or some, something that you can do to help with that would be greatly appreciated. At least to let us know where they're at.
Last, last summer, Doug restaked with a laugh, and he wrote off, they're still there.
We either did that, the stakes were there.
I personally, myself, I would prefer to have my own contractor do that tile work, rather than that, really, we had in here doing it. Because he, you could not talk to the man. I mean, he could not, you suggest that he handle that tin whistle down, he then goes the other way, just to be on your end. I'd rather my own contractor, even if I got paid for it myself.
I agree. Well.
My team would probably do it for me.
If you're gonna pay for it yourself, that's, that's fine. But as far as we do a warranty claim, and we don't give the contractor an opportunity to do it, then that can get, that can get the district in trouble. If you just, if you just go and hire somebody else and then say, oh, that was your fault, now you have to pay for it, and you don't give them an opportunity to fix it, that's a problem.
I'll have to go back to my notes, but isn't it in the annual code underage that the warranty period starts at the completion hearing?
I don't know. I'm hitting the code section. I haven't seen it.
So, I thought I read that in there. I have to go back.
I don't know if the code actually talks about a warranty period or not.
It's, it's a, it's a contract.
Yeah.
A negotiating contract. Like, you can buy a car with or without a warrant.
Right.
You can do a drainage project with or without a warrant. So, I think it's a negotiated contract provision. Not, not a code provision.
We have that in our contract that we developed, they agreed to.
Do we have a ballpark number of what it would cost to find one of these?
One of them?
Well, if we're talking, are we talking four of them at least?
Four of them, it could be probably around $3,000, I would, I would guess.
A piece?
No.
Liquidated.
Totally. And it could be more because
Time looking.
Pipe, time looking and pipe prices
Besides.
have gone up, and it depends on the size of the pipe. I'm assuming 12-inch.
And our cheapest would be if we could get them all while we're, for mobilization?
Yes.
So, is there a dollar amount? If we exceed a dollar amount, then we have to place bits, but this is not gonna exceed that. So, could we potentially, knowing that these landowners have that rough idea of where their issues are, could we approach a contractor from their suggestion to come out and do it?
The issue would be paying for that work. So, if it, you couldn't turn around and tell this contractor that they're responsible for that.
Right, I mean, then you'd have to pay for it. But then, I guess that would work, then we'd have to come back to the district.
Yep, yep.
So, realistically, we have to try.
Yeah, to a lot of.
Paying first. Can we set a timeline on that? Can we retain, I guess my question is, can we retain more of this percentage to say, hey, we have issues, here's our warranty claim, we need you to fix this by this date? And if not, we need a good contractor to come in, and at that point, we can take liquidating damages?
We have a completion. We have done, so here's an example. We've had projects where they finish them in December or something, and their seeding left to be done, like in road ditches or like with tile projects, and they still need to seed the road ditches. Well, we don't want them to seed them in December. So, we go ahead and we go through this process of the completion hearing and report, and then we just recommend that more than what's due to them for the seeding, like maybe double or something, so to make sure that they're gonna come back and do it, is withheld from retainage for a time until they get that done. As far as putting a timeline on it, we have, we haven't done that. But they, that would incentivize them to come back if we hold some back, especially more than it's worth to do that work. So, they have extra incentive to come and do it, because they know this money's hanging out here that they aren't gonna get until they do it. So, that, that would be an option.
I just don't want them to view it as, well, it's $20 dollars. And yes, that is a significant amount of money, but will they look at it the same way? It would take them like a year or so to get back here. That's why I was wondering if we could do a timeframe on it.
I think you could try to withhold part of the retainage and tell them to deal with that.
Okay.
And they'd have to see you or do something to collect that part of the retainage, rather than you see them and have to collect it from there.
Good. That makes sense.
Unfortunately, I could have them just.
Yeah. I don't know how much money you're talking about.
Well.
You're saying you've got three?
Got at least three.
I mean, and you've got four?
He, he had, you had one, right?
The plug one, there were, Don marked two or three other ones last summer that were, broke off and bent into the creek. Those were supposed to be fixed, and he marked to have those also in that sentence.
So, we should, I think we should withhold some retainage for all that, some additional retainage for all that's being worked out.
Yeah, Don had marked those, and then he supposedly got a hold of the contractor, because they were moving up the creek by then. They could easily come back and fix them, but he, they chose not to come back.
Before we leave today, if you guys could show me which ones those are, where they're at, and then I can go from there. But I'd say that we, so there's.
What's, what does it cost, or you have any idea what it costs to put it on, like, for a tin whistle? I mean, if you're in a project. Well, I have a price for tin whistle, though. And that's another item that I really love, me, a six-inch tile outlet, they put a eight or 10-inch tin whistle lag.
Yeah, same thing there. Small tile, we gotta, we gotta go with this 10 or 12-inch oversight pipe.
Yeah, and that oversight pipe sticking out, in some cases, was sticking two or three feet out into the ditch. Sure, it wasn't water in there now, but come flood time, it's gonna tear the end of that off.
An engineering deal, what's, what's the idea behind all that allows those animals to crawl up in there?
I'm not 100% sure. I should.
They surely could have the bug.
Well, I know we do, I know we do 12-inch, I know that's what we have in our specifications, 12-inch metal. And I can, I can check into that, but I'm not 100% clear on.
And why, I didn't, I didn't really understand that, why, why it's such an oversight pipe?
Because there has to be a reduction or a reducer from the tile to that tin whistle. Hopefully, they go up in there, if they did, it's gonna be a blowout.
A transition?
Yeah. I mean, if you're, but there's a lot of, a lot of money that we're probably, a couple of them are six-inch tile coming in there, into the creek, I think.
Well, there shouldn't be a blowout, because it's going into a bigger. Well, there shouldn't be a blowout, because it's going into a bigger pipe.
Unless it sucks out.
But animals.
It shouldn't be.
They'll just dig right up, then you'll have a washout there.
Yeah. Okay, I see what you're saying. They're supposed to put a.
It's got a.
Solid connection to it, not just like sticking in.
Hmm. Hopefully, they're into the.
Yeah. But I think, I mean, I think we can, at least temporarily withhold. Oh, it's, you said there's seven of them. So five thousand, at least, could be withheld in the meantime, while that's being sorted out.
Is five thousand gonna incentivize them to come back? Because if I look at this, we're holding a ten percent retainage at fifty-six thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and nine cents. Uh, we have liquidated damages calculated at thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and two cents, which gives us twenty-three thousand one hundred and three dollars and twenty-three cents left over. So does it make sense to withhold that entire payment of twenty-three thousand to incentivize them to come back? Or can we not do that, because it's not the project? Like, because there's a percentage that we have to be within.
Well, until these whistles are fixed, they really haven't completed the project in conformance to the contract, and they really haven't completed the project to the engineers' satisfaction. These followings led us to say that it's, it's substantial complete, but now we finds out today that there are seven connections that aren't right, that you didn't know about until you stood here and approved it. By the time they hang on to everything to get their attention, instead of, we come back and we'll take nine hundred pieces for seven of them, and return the rest to you, something.
Okay.
So we, we can just have something where we, we're holding, we're holding retainage until that's resolved.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see us hold that whole amount.
Even if we can't find these right away? I mean, we got one we can't find, till maybe...
Well, then the district's gonna have the choice.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of districts, the district is case for this. Or they have a landlord bidding case. In this particular project, you're having the contractor bid in the pit. So, I see everything under the sun. These, because they're saying, they'd rather get it fixed right with their local contractor, than have this guy back in town.
Well, you know, if you come over to the pipeline, it's not, nobody has access to it other than the crop deck.
So if you guys really wouldn't mind, then you'd just get some money and hire your own contractor.
Yeah, like, they got ones in crop, they don't really want going in there till September, October.
Sure, sure, you only, you only let crop to do this. Does that make any sense?
I had a question. Aren't, aren't we now letting them go do work in the ditch?
Say again?
Well, then, if, are you saying that you're gonna pay them, give them money to have it fixed, but then aren't we letting private do work in the ditch?
Not when the contractor does it, with the board's permission.
Okay.
What, yeah, I think what they're saying is, is they're recommending, recommending somebody, and then you can approve that, right?
You have private contractors that are knowledgeable drainage contractors in this county, that are making connections to district tile all the time.
Yeah.
And you have them do that because they're knowledgeable, and they don't wreck your tile, or your ditch. If I patterned tile my farm, if I'm one of these guys, and I got a bunch of outlets coming into the ditch, you let those private contractors work in that ditch to finish up that project for you, that's not violating anything they're doing, but the mission under board, because you know that these local guys know what they're doing, and they're not gonna wreck the ditch or wreck tile.
Well, my contractor was hired by, worked for many years for Ryan County, so I guess they must.
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably, and why? Just, if it comes to that, make sure you're above us.
Is that Rocky?
Pardon?
I thought I heard you say Mark.
Mark Tewesworth.
So every one of the outlets that you guys engineered for them to do, is, you have record of that? So if these are in addition to that, you know, if there's a six inch that was missed or something, but then yet, you know, by the end of the contract, they, they were supposed to fix them all anyway, correct?
Well.
But then their price keeps going up, because you said that contract was actually fluctuating?
The dot, the dollar value?
Yeah.
Yeah, paid for work done.
Yep, and that's what, if these were missed, then we actually didn't pay them for that work done, and then, but yet, it wasn't in the contract to begin with either.
Right. We'll have, we'll have to check into that, because they're saying if those were marked, be done.
Oh, they were marked.
Okay.
All, all seven of them, then?
Yeah, none, I think.
I've got a, I've got a map here that comes, you know, because it's gonna be, by the time you find that outlet, dig it up, remove all the rocks from the, and then replace the road in the blanket, you know, you gotta, probably got fifteen hundred dollars per.
I was just wondering, from these.
I know for sure that we need some part.
Not all of them. Some of them outside the river rap.
Oh, yeah.
Not all.
Yeah.
Like, with the one beginning, you might have to go back through.
Two of the river rap.
Let me, if there's a table that shows.
Here's, here's.
We have.
There you are showing some.
Certainly, it's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a hundred and twelve feet.
They're not, they're not all that.
Okay.
A lot of them can be just like.
I show, on these, others, several of them, spots are.
That one.
I don't know what they are.
Okay.
All the ones that have, no, can't ever done. Not, 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 not this. So that was done before.
Well, and each one of these dots on here is not a tile outlet, if you wanna make that clear. There's different sites and different things that were done through the project. You have to go to the table that shows what work we're ordering to be done at each one of those sites. Like, if it's a, if it's a stress or rip rap, that marks the downstream start, I guess. That's where it started, and it'll go however many feet up, so that's, that's fine.
You know, I just, I think there's four of them are marked, you know, I know, on here, but are, I figured it's outlets.
Okay, well, I'll look at that more before we're done. But I do think we just have, we're holding retained until that, those issues are resolved.
And, and right now, we don't know how.
No.
Yeah. What's the right thing to do?
Because they were marked in the.
Yeah.
And this might bring more engineering fees, correct? We.
Yeah.
So, we should just hold them all back from that.
Six, six inch nail on the floor.
Cause they'll be able to. Yeah, well, for now, we should at least just not wait for retainage. And we can still do this. Yeah, the rest, I, I think we can finish the rest of this stuff, and still, just put that hold until it's resolved.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll get a little bit more ground with them. Well, I guess I'm gonna start going into some of these claims. So, the first one I've got is from Jeff Smith. Is Jeff Smith here? Okay. Uh, and I'll just read it off, it's an email, sent to Barb. Hi Barb, this is Jeff Smith from the Hartley area. I farm forty acres that Doug Graves owns in Hartley township, section seven. Last summer, they ran down my corn with equipment to get to the drainage ditch west of my field. I thought Doug was going to turn in a bill for it last fall, but we were talking about it last week, and said he never did. I should contact you. They ran over six rows, fifteen feet times thirteen hundred and twenty feet, which is nineteen thousand eight hundred square feet, or point four or five acres, times two hundred and twenty bushels per acre, equals a hundred bushels. The price today is seven dollars. The last fall, it was five fifty, so I'm not sure how this process works, but wanted to let, let you. If there's any, if there's something else I need to do or talk to, please let me know or call me. Um, thank you, Jeff Smith. And I looked at, I looked at this one. The, the one issue that I had with it is that I'm not seeing thirteen hundred and twenty feet of length. I measure out from the lane toward, at this, this property, the lane that they would've used to get, and then drive along to get to the ditch, at eight hundred and fifty feet. For most of these, where they use access length, we're using a twenty foot width for crop damage, so that's actually more than like what he was saying. Um, and he's got two hundred and twenty bushels an acre, we use two hundred and one, and he didn't really specify a price per bushel, but throughout seven, five fifty. But, if it was five fifty versus we had five ninety-four, then that kinda cancels out the bushel per acre thing, it's about the same dollars per acre. It's a little, we would have a little bit less acres total. And that's what's in our report here, so you can. There's tables that show for different landowners, and different parcels, different, um, crops, damage compensation that we're recommending. And so that would be under Doug Graves. I've got point two, three acres, where Jeff was saying point four or five acres. Um, and, I can get you to the right page in the maps. It's on, it's on page four. At the top, you see, it says page numbers for the maps, it's on page four or five. And there's, there's two hundred and ninety of the street there, towards the top of the map. On the north side of the road, there's red. That's the, that's the area that we have for, it's eight hundred and fifty feet. If we get to thirteen hundred and twenty feet, it'd have to go a lot further to the east. I, I'm not sure where it came up with thirteen hundred and twenty feet. But so I guess for that one, I would just recommend that you go with the, what the report, Or we could try to call Jeff, put him on the spot, I guess, I don't know. What do you think?
If it continued to the east, that's a long ways off the ditch.
Continuing to the east.
If you're talking to the north side of the road.
Yeah, it would have to go another five hundred feet east.
Yeah.
And you said six rows, right?
Yeah.
And you're allowing twenty foot.
Twenty foot.
Twelve of them.
There's, is there any more discussion on that, or should I go to the next?
No, I think you're good. And my meeting's already.
Okay. Okay. The next one I've got is from Paul Sickler. On behalf of, uh, Rodney Krueger. Dear Board of Supervisors, in response to your notice of completion hearing for Drainage District Number Five, I understand that the hearing will be held at ten thirty on July thirteenth in the Assembly Room, in the O'Brien County Courthouse in Crispell, Iowa. I am the farm manager for the Krueger family and represent this farmland. I will be out of town and unable to attend this meeting in person. Therefore, I am now submitting a claim for damages to reseed the CRP grasses along both sides of the drainage ditch. The O'Brien County NRCS office recently informed me that the CRP grasses need to be reseeded in this area, amounting to about three point five acres. I also contacted Riot Conservation Incorporated and received a bid from them in the amount of approximately a thousand dollars for this reseeding cost. This is about four hundred and fifty-five dollars in seed costs and five hundred dollars in the actual seeding cost, plus some tax. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing from you. With this one, and I tried to get ahold of Paul, but I could not, I could not get ahold of him, I, he, he didn't respond back. Um, that is, and, there's a map that they provided too, but I can't see it real well, but this, at the north part of the ditch, and I measured it out on the computer, and basically, that three point five acres is the entire width of the buffer for that area. And we didn't measure that amount being destroyed. If you look at our, our map, we have just a little sliver outside of the right of way on the east side, um, and it, it doesn't go to the edge of the buffer. So this one, I kinda have a hard time with. I, we could just hold on this one, I, I did mention about CRP, go ahead.
Rodney Krueger.
Oh, I thought that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, the driver trucks that brought in the rock, came down our, through indoor, brought down our driveway, related to cross, crossing, and went on the west side of the ditch, which is not, which is not part of here, yellow, and, and, and rock, and, uh, all the way down Rogers, uh, property, to the, uh, the salons, on the west side. So they serviced the whole west side of the ditch through our CRP.
Well, and, and we went out there and, and measured it off, and surveyed it off, and from what we're showing here, they stayed within the right of way.
Not on the west side, they were over by, right next to the burn field, whatever field I was.
Okay.
Cause I was there when they brought a truck in, and it drove right down, right down outside the, outside the, right of way on, on the western edge, right alongside the curb.
Okay. Well, if, if, I guess it's possible that our survey guy missed, missed that. Um, can you confirm, I mean, is, is it, NRCS is requiring you to reseed that entire area of CRP?
Yes.
And rip up the existing?
It's already been done. It's not been seeded, but the ground has been worked up.
Okay, and the full width of it?
Of the entire, three and a half acres.
And they, they didn't require you to do that?
Yes.
That's not typical, I mean, typically, wherever the damage was done, then that.
Well, I think the damage, large part was done at the first little round. But, uh, on the first, in the initial contract. But, on the first, in the initial contract, was when it all started, and then, and then they used, they used our CRP to drive their, their rock trucks to survey the whole west side of that ditch, all the way down to the...
So you're saying after the last repair project, it wasn't reseeded?
No.
And then now you're reseeding cover for that project and this project?
Well, yes.
Well...
It's been in CRP thirty, forty years, so it was, it's well established. And now we start over with, with the seed. Now, I understand the right of way, and I understand maybe not three and a half acres, but it's certainly on both sides of the ditch when they went outside the right of way. They couldn't have been in the right of way because that's on, that's on top of a ridge line that runs, runs right next to the creek. They're not going to go out there. They drove over on the far west side, it was a nice flat level.
They done that on ours too. They drove right next to the cornfield, which was...
I was there when they brought a truck in. I watched them dump and drive in.
And it couldn't physically possibly stay under fifty feet at all?
No.
Because I'd have been right next to the bank.
They couldn't pile it up. They were going to reach.
And then when they dumped the rocks, they piled the dirt, they didn't prepare, that got...
That was outside fifteen feet.
Yeah.
And they never got close to the creek. Because there's a, there's a ridge line that runs, runs alongside...
Yeah, where they dumped the spoils.
From the original, there's a burb.
Spoil pile, yeah. Well... I guess what I would recommend for that is, I mean, the three and a half acres is all of it. And I could, I could try to go recalculate it if you want me to, otherwise...
I think it's certainly on both sides for, for at least the same distance as you have on the east side. It's on the west side as well.
Would... It's hard to just kind of eyeball it and get a rough number. It, it should be something less than three and a half acres of it, because of the right of way. And I can, I can recalculate that if you guys would like me to. Otherwise, it's just kind of like looking at it and saying, well, we're about two acres, or it's kind of hard to say just looking.
You don't do that all for nothing. There'd be a charge for what you're gonna do.
That would take me like five minutes.
Well, I'm saying, what I'm saying, I've sat here for, since ten thirty, listening to much crap, and you guys have not guaranteed me that the next six inch rain, that I'm not gonna get flooded out. So that's where I'm gonna leave this, because I've got several piles of dirt in my ditch. I'm gonna take care of my stuff. You and Sherry both know where they're at. You know where they pushed the payload or the bag load. Those ripples are all there yet too. You guys screwed up, all you supervisors. You all screwed up. And you guys, a little bit of stuff, that's okay. You'll fix it yourself. I'm gonna get flooded out anyway. Have a nice day.
Larry, you think I don't ever get flooded out?
No.
Wrong.
I think he's talking about something else.
Well, the project stopped, that fence line, didn't go in, never went in this, this project, never went in this project.
They, they crossed his property just to get down.
Yeah, this project never went in there.
They didn't do, they didn't do work on the ditch in his property. They did cross his property. There are worse than that on his property.
He shows, they showed some neighbor butts out there. I had several of them mine. You know, that can be repaired easily. The reason I didn't put a request in for my filter strips is I'm due for, to change contracts on mine. So it's, this is the last year of the, they wouldn't have reseeded it for one year. So I might get reseeded next year, but I, I'm not requesting. I did, I didn't put in for mine. I mean, and I've got, on behalf of that, of their work area where they pushed the spoils out. Same thing, NRCS had been on me about when I'm gonna reseed it. I told the contractor, had left this spring, contractor wasn't done, had left his equipment, I'm still there. I almost called Sherry one day to say, would you please talk to them? Because I can't do anything until they're gone. I wanted to reseed it, I was gonna reseed it, and now it's, now it's, and the NRCS told me, I may not have the time to reseed it. It's been dry all day. So mine's kind of sitting there in weeds. But we'll wait till fall, I think is what they told me.
Well, it sounds like to me based on three and a half acres, the cost of seeding it, what you said, it's pretty close to three and a half acres.
Yeah.
Based on that, I think that's pretty close.
Well, and in this report, that's, that's the difference. I didn't have three and a half acres, but yeah.
Exactly.
But I can quickly get that dollar amount. And for, for both of you guys, you're gonna have to reseed it at some point, right? So we've got, I mean, like Randy, I've got eight hundred dollars in here in this table for buffer compensation. And, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Roger Westfall.
Roger Westfall.
And Shirley.
So I, there's not much on yours that I've got, fifteen dollars.
I can't hardly send them over for that.
But you will be reseeding it, so it's fine to give this damage compensation. You can use that.
All I want is part of my, you know, cost of receiving. Cost of seeding is probably... Column is this?
Yeah.
This is the parcel that you're looking at? This is obvious, this is this is?
Yes.
Because this whole thing, you're all measured up together, it's like five, five tiers at least. So you just take off the width of the whole ditch?
Okay, well, if you got, we can just, you said five point three?
The CRP...
So if it, you've got all of it.
That's all of it.
And then, I had, I had measured it, outside the ditch was three and a half acres. So we can just subtract that.
So all of the CRP you got to go under? Is it sixty-six foot on both sides?
No, I don't know how wide it is, but...
So that would be one...
It probably is. Sixty-six feet wide by quarter mile, both sides.
Both sides. So that'd be one point eight acres outside the right of way. So we could take... We had a thousand dollars for three and a half acres. Quick calc. Times... So that would be, if we use the same equivalent cost per acre from what was quoted here, it would come out as five hundred and, five hundred and fourteen dollars.
Yeah.
A change. Rodney?
Yeah.
Did you, were you following that?
I was, no, I wasn't.
So I had measured, it's like three and a half acres was the whole thing of CRP outside the ditch. He had measured it at just the total area, including the ditch, as five point three acres.
Five point five three.
Okay, five point five three, so I gotta add a little bit more. I'll recount that. Five acres. So that's two point oh three acres. So that's five hundred and eighty dollars.
But he said both sides.
As both sides, yes.
Yeah. That minus the deal together. This time I get it, I'm getting five point.
So if you and Sherry put this in the right spots, we're going Rodney Krueger, rather than seventy-two dollars for buffer, it's gonna be five eighty?
Correct.
Okay.
By the way.
Huh? No, five eighty.
Five eighty.
There's a little spot right here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, so when they... So five hundred and eighty dollars instead of seventy-two?
It's, yes. Okay. Just clear that, and then... I think we talked about most of this, but I'm gonna read it anyway. It's Roger Westfall's. "We are objecting to the fact that the work on Drainage District Number Five is completed in southeast-southeast and northeast-southeast of Section Twelve, Township Ninety-seven, Range Four. Several animal guards were not installed. Pile outlet north of Site Twelve dash Seven left was not uncovered and installed. Several big piles of grass and dirt were left in the ASC filter strips. Several large rocks were left in the government filter strip. Lots of small rock and filter strip where rock was potted. Because of lack of driveway access, repairs will have to be done this fall. Sincerely, Roger and Shirley Westfall." Which, where approximately at along the ditch are you, Roger? Is it, where did they primarily do the work on yours last year, or was it some this spring?
Uh, about, probably a third of it after it froze. Trying to dig in the frost, we were there.
Okay.
Yeah, and they finished up this spring. Never did level up the, the right of way. Your...
The spoils?
Never, never leveled that. I mean, I, I go over there, if you go over there with a four-wheeler, you better have a seatbelt on. Because you can't drive slow enough in there. You drop in the holes and the holes get, you know, have sort of reversing it out. I mean, they didn't level it at all. I mean, that was my recommendation that, you know, they, his project was... And the recommendation I would give to the supervisors, if they ever have to do this again, I would recommend they start on the north side, and once they, you know, I assume they're gonna start down the south and do a nice job, then they get up to our place when it's froze. And in the fall, when they can't work decent, you know, I say should have gone the north end. We're on the north end, Rodney's northwest. And definitely, Ray went out there with a scraper. He's got a land scraper. He went out there and he couldn't even, when he needed to hook a tractor out there on there to go along there. And he can't take a ride with a regular tractor and just sit there.
Well, I think, and we've talked about a few of these items, but the rest of it, like the large rocks and piles of stuff. They not...
A lot of it done that, they went with the builder way early before they started hauling rock. They pushed all this nice tall grass in, in our filter strip, pushed out all of the piles and then left late.
Well, I think we can add this to the list of things that needs to be resolved before the tange is released.
Well, I, I didn't request any money there because I know I'm gonna be tearing it up this fall. They're gonna reseed it and go into a ten or fifteen-year contract with it. But if I was to tear that up and go to the farm, I, I mean, there's rocks buried. You know, the trucks go over the rocks, so they're buried in that CRP ground on the east. They're only gonna do a little stubble around about six inch deep buried.
I have one of the few, the one we're talking about, one of the few that has crop on it. Most of them have CRP. I, same thing there, I spent hours and hours at a bottom scraper trying to feather the spoils out and fit in the rock. I spent a lot of hours on the rock to re, so I could farm it again. I think the, summed it up, you can see our display with contractors. But the major part of it is...
I would say me here.
I would say that.
And I'm not so sure I would recommend that we do a different engineer. I, and I see in the contract, he got, what, six thousand extra dollars because he was late. How do you, how's your salary? Or how do they do that certain percentage of the contract, of the contract?
You know, a tower.
So we've had, because it's been going longer, we've been dealing with him quite a bit more than we would've had to. We've had him trying to get ahold of the contractor a lot more, so that's where those hours are coming in.
And that's what we're saying.
I never asked you.
Yeah, and for the, from the, from November sixth until the end of the work, that stuff is what we had in here as, basically that's an actual damage that was caused by the work being done late. And so that's essentially, if the board approves that, those liquidated damages, that's coming out of the contractor's pay. So for that additional engineering cost that was incurred, that's gonna be on contractor and not the district. So Roger, just, what do you want us to do about this stuff? You want us to come and fix that as part of the warranty stuff?
No, I wouldn't do it. So, I mean, I'm not gonna, I don't want that back there from my property. Obviously. I, I watched him all summer. I, I helped my son farm. I don't, I live in the country. Whenever I come, invariably come by his place, he'd be sleeping on the camera. Now, he was there, but he was sleeping. Or, and he'd come in the morning and it'd take him an hour and a half to get his rig ready. And I used grease every dirt on that thing for forty times an hour and a half. But, you know, he just, he didn't use his time very wisely. I guarantee you that. And that's not, I'm not, I'm not asking for a lot of money there. I'd like to get that, all that, you know, when we put that ten whistle on it. I'd like to get reimbursed for that, but I'd like to do the work myself or have, have a contract. Because I just, I for sure don't have this guy in there.
Well, and I guess one, one thing just related to that that I wanna, wanna say is that when we, when the district enters into a contract with this contractor, we don't have direct control over everything they do. And we, and Sherry was a big part of that, going out there checking to see when they're there, or if they're not there, saying, checking on progress and, okay, you're not gonna get it done. You gotta, gotta get going, you gotta get in here. Where are you? And it came close to the point where we were ready to move on to a different contractor, but there's that, there's issues with that too. And it's just a bad situation all around, and it's unfortunate. But that's, that's part of some of these projects. We've got a certain amount of control of the contractors. And, but with that being said, now we know about this contractor and...
Exactly.
Can keep that in mind in the future and already have with, with my job. We had a different project that he was a little bit in, didn't get the project.
Well, it's sad because I think he was new contractor one day. I mean, he just rode away doing it. Well, it's sad because I think he was new contractor one day. I mean, he was broke, he wasn't doing nothing. In this type of, doesn't seem...
He's been around for about ten years.
Mostly farm time.
This would've been the biggest project that he, the, the bid, a bid project for Graves District that he had done.
Yes. He kind of messed in his nest there, I think.
What other things you have, Chris?
I don't have any others. Barb, do you know of any others?
Have you ever think I got?
Okay. Any other discussion?
Would there be any way that I could get reimbursed for that this fall if I do that work this fall or is that gonna be available?
We have to give the contractor a chance to do it. If you go, yes, you could if, if they're willing to pay it out of the funds of the district and not from the contractor himself. Um, but then it wouldn't be a warranty thing. You wanna build a warranty where it's, it's on them, then we have to go through that warranty process where the contractor has a right to refuse. Say you've got this issue here, fix it. And if they don't wanna come back and then you have that contractor say, well, they wanna bring this person in for this dollar amount. They say, fine, do it. If that's coming out of our retainage, okay.
Well, let's just leave it like that. Cross every, I mean, it's not a bad idea. I've got the equipment there. If I use my son's equipment, it won't cost me much. I will put a payment back to the contractor.
Inevitably, on this project, what I, like, hold on, like, the last fifteen percent of this is gonna be passed on to the gay Graves District.
Yes.
Keeping correct.
Yeah.
So one way or another we're all paying for it or will.
I would be interested if we could, if we go back to that original contract, if we could put a timeframe on it.
I don't know if the contractor saved that, like a specific timeframe, but it would be reasonable to put a timeframe on there. And then that can be the right of, the first right of refusal. Basically, if you don't do it by this time in a reasonable amount of time, then that was your opportunity. Now you had your chance. Now we can send somebody else in there and it's coming out of your retainage. Is that reasonable, Jim?
Yes.
Cause I would like to be tracked up.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying just like set a timeframe. So say we have these issues. You don't want him in here by September. Right? That way you're right. So crap comes out. So let's say end of September. So we give them October, November to get it done. That's, that's a reasonable amount of time. That way it's, it's done. They can get somebody else.
The only thing that I was trying to get sorted out from Roger and Randy is whether or not you want him to come back at all. Roger doesn't, so...
I'd, I'd rather, yeah, obviously my cost. I'd rather have my own contractor. I know when he's done, I'll get it done. Pay it for it.
I mean, I, you know, you can put a title on him, but if he's two or three months late, then he shows up someday when it's about one month early, wants to fix it.
Would it be out of line? I mean, he may not wanna come back if he has to bring all of his equipment back. Isn't that why to kinda be like, well, technically, you know, you're under warranty to fix this or you're willing to walk away pay his X amount, rough estimate of what it costs somebody else to do or whatever and then kind of this. I mean, could you walk for that out, for that out?
If you're working, you say, well, I'll come and do it.
I'll come and do it and they do that one.
Right. That's the only thing.
That's what you're saying. Yeah, it's under, it still is deal to fix it.
I know legally you can, or under, legally you can almost have to, right? I mean, we're if we don't want him back, we can't go after him for a pain call. That's, we're just the district.
That's correct.
So depends if you kinda want him to pay a little bit more money. Or like give him less money if it's a change or if we just wanna get rid of him and pay more money out of your pocket essentially.
Could we retain material cost from late? And say, we'll retain the cost from the materials that should've been purchased, but we won't turn it later. Cause then he's not really out anything. He doesn't have to mobilize. He's not paying anybody to be here. He's not coming off a job site. It's just material.
That could be part of the negotiation. I don't think we have to decide that right now. Do we, I don't think we do, do we, Jim?
This is kinda why I don't go to completion here.
Frank, that's very close to you.
But you're putting yourself in a position to be able to negotiate that. It's all, it's all gonna do it. He said, we have this much retainage. We wanna get this fixed. We don't want you to do it. Here's the word on a retain. And you do it and he'll have to sue you to get it.
So it's better just to say, it's not finished, but will allow you to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that then.
And we keep, we've got an estimated at a thousand dollars for the whistle.
Keep some, keep some of the money.
We're gonna keep five hundred bucks and we need five hundred bucks and we'll, we'll take care of it. Cause that's what the landowners want.
Would we know by September whether or not that's satisfactory to them? Duke King. The reason I ask that is if they sign off or done, we're out of it, then you make a request to do the work to our board as representatives from the Graves Districts. We can allow them to go in for a minor repair or whatever you wanna call it. And then it comes out of the district, yeah.
Remind me, then what's the cost limit? So the, the cost limit to a minor repair?
It's uh, it's uh, it's not a, it's not a factor.
Not at all.
Does, does our Graves ditch here have a fund or emergency fund or a repair fund?
Yes.
Well.
We're not, we're not.
Not right now.
Not right now with all the best, right?
Now.
But there are a bunch there.
Well, you're, well, right now we're in the hole. We're stamping warrants because there isn't enough.
Yeah, I, I realize that. In Cassuth County, we get assessed every year. A small amount, every year. We have for thirty-five, forty years. And uh, we've never been assessed, or never been uh, assessed for a minor repair because they've got money available. Now, we did get a major assessment. We got assessed on a quarter section. We got assessed a hundred and fifty bucks an acre to take out all the cottonwoods and blueards. And I think this settlement here is the attorney on that one over in Cassuth County. Tell you, when you get that bill and you handle a hundred and fifty bucks per acre for a hundred and sixty acres, that's, that's a sizable amount of money.
The plan is when we, after FEMA pays whatever they're going to pay and then wherever the total bills are, I think they'll probably add a little bit of money on top of what we need to pay off all the, the stamp warrants. So that there will be something in the account for minor repairs going forward.
I guess my question was, would be then if we let this guy go, you know, if I come with a, a bill to put in, a reasonable bill to put in a outlet, would there be a little money in that reserve fund that you could pay it out there rather than going out of this contractor? I realize it's contractor's responsibility, but...
So I would hope we build enough retainage to cover it all like that.
Right.
For you to be for.
Correct, ma'am. I'm wrong. You have to come and get our permission first.
Correct.
Well, yeah, I understand.
Okay. I just, just make that clear.
Typically when we make assessments at the end of the project, there'll be enough assessed to pay for that project. And then maybe a small amount left to do minor repairs over a reasonable timeframe. That's what Cassuth counties do. We're keeping a little bit of funds. Solidity, obviously, doesn't have to every year go through the procedure of expensive, even small assessments. They'll keep enough money that they anticipate. We spray ditches a lot. Maybe every year we spray for weeds.
Spray for weeds, but then with contract over there, you got, you can't spray trees in that ditch. And we took cottonwoods out and eel it out of the cotton.
Yeah, they do lots of projects up there that have cottonwoods that were like eight feet in diameter. Millions of dollars worth of cotton. Cause they're hard to go to. But anyhow, neither here nor there, it's, it's wise and this engineered thing does it to put a little bit of an additional assessment. So there's a small account for smaller dips.
Name it, spell it, physical.
Yeah, they call it, yeah.
But it's not, we're gonna be all right. We have to do that if Kane asks me any attempts. Our truckers.
Help me understand what was the latest proposition here.
Yeah, where do people wanna, guys, tell us and negotiate?
We're talking about possibly having Kane come back?
I'm possible.
Not with us. And then it'll all depend on our weather. If we start getting rain in that area, you ain't gonna do any uh, construction in there. Come fall if it's raining because that dip's gonna be full of water. Thanks to a couple of guys, you know, down in our township, uh, or in our tile ditch from another county.
I like the idea about negotiating with him and see if he would, I don't think he wants to come back anyway.
No.
And if he, if he could keep some of the money for those repairs and if he agreed.
Yeah, reasonable, well, maybe not his whole name.
But he has to agree.
Right.
Cause that's his contract.
Well, they love the territory.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, if you're in the cap, let's just hold him under. He's gonna have to do something to get some of the company.
Oh, before we let him go, he agrees, but...
Hopefully he agrees to please your money for us.
Yeah, and uh, cr.
Get out of your hair.
So we're negotiating.
Okay.
And what is that dollar about? Is it three thousand bucks? Is it, did it finish everything? Is it? I don't know where they mount. What should it be?
Well...
Just say, hey, you're done.
We can start somewhere and see where it goes. See, I can, I can, I can report back and say what they would minimally accept.
I don't think he wants to back. It's all about that.
One of, one of the reasons I guess I would prefer him to do this are, look, I own the contractors. I don't wanna negotiate with the supervisors. To see if I can open that berm up or that ditch and want that water back in there. I've got water running, a big rain coming down, hits that berm now, it's washed on the outside one. Hill district going down to the road ditch for a mile length. And I asked him if he would open that berm up a little bit so the water would run in that.
Oh, we can't do this. We can't drain the water off the field. Where do you think that water's gonna go? You don't direct that water. That was, that was kind of our previous project. And with Wes Garrett-Jenkins and his idea, we never, none of us landlords liked that. He wouldn't, he wouldn't let us, he wouldn't let the water re-enter the creek. Right? Where it naturally did. He berms it all off. So it's all sort of, so now it goes down the field to, to your company ditch and that's what caused the problem with your bridge. It'd be a run to the ditch and then run around and undermine the bridge. He wouldn't let it re-enter in the low spots where it naturally did. He ran it down the field to the ditch.
Sounds to me like it needs a surface drain. You don't want it to go over the top of the ditch, man. If you run down it.
You know what happens when it's gonna, it will someday. It'll overtop.
Yeah, when you get that three or four inch rain, you walk that way, you better have a boat to go down there because there isn't any tile big enough to go and take all that water.
Your, your previous engineer from Estrel, his idea, he puts some tin whistles in in certain places to drain. We all know in the big rains, the three, four, five, six inches, those are plugged with cornstalks and it'll overtop. Cause they'll plug them like that. That's what I figured for you. But that was his idea was to berm the creek. None of us agreed with how he wanted.
We're all used to your asphalt, right? I understand that. With, in practice, we have our law. Like say you go down two flat areas on Polk County, you're in there where they have the, the Graves ditches, the Ojones. They're all bermed up to, all that water is.
You know?
That same concept here is, I'm not a Granger. I, I don't know this, I just understand that concept. And that's what we try to avoid is brack running off the field.
Well, he's, he was, you see, he wasn't treated at the level. But it's, we all know water on the path.
I'm sure. I don't like that.
That, we typically put surface drains in spots like that. And it's possible they could clog up those cornstalks at times. If it's properly designed and way more often than not, they're gonna be helpful. And it would help with that situation where it's can't get into the ditch. So it has to just keep piling up and running all over to find a way in.
On the amount of rain that comes in Hawkway.
And what happened before, that ditch was pulled to that point on the other side of that berm too. You know, it was over the top.
Well, and ditches aren't designed to, to handle like hundred-year storms and stuff. They're, they're really more for two-year storms. So, and this one's kinda right on the borderline of being big enough even for a two-year storm. So there's times where, but it's still gonna help after that storm event happens and then the water starts coming. It has a way to get out. But.
Last ten years, it's been two-year storms. Well, that's what we have. That year.
I know.
I know. It did a lot of damage, but it, that's not.
So in any case, on those outlets, I'll, I still wanna talk with you guys, get, know exactly where they are, it's how many. And I can at least float that out there. Kind of the plan and I'll report back to the board and we'll find out.
There, anyway, we can retain fifteen dollars an acre for a few, like one or two trips, you know, to level out some of that stuff that's rougher. You know, it isn't a lot of acres. Among them, it's, like, one of them is just like fourteen acres. You know, the, the whole CRP with, on some of them is two hundred and fifty foot wide by, you know, thirteen hundred fifty, about fourteen hundred buck or fourteen acres.
One confusion that I have a little bit about those spoils is for this project in particular, there really shouldn't have been a lot of, they, they dug out some sandbars and stuff, but a lot of it, they shouldn't have been digging out from the bottom and then dumping a big pile all on the whole ditch.
So that brings up another, in this particular one I'm talking about, where the plug tile, a couple of different times I've gone out there and I caught him digging a hole in the field the size of like three, you could lay three pickups down in there. And I stopped him. I said, what are you doing? And so he says, they were digging gravel out of the creek. They took ours away a lot. They took gravel out of the creek and put them in that pretty big hole. I said, what are you doing? Well, he said, we gotta do something with that gravel. So basically, I mean, the sand did in our field. And I, that far major ideal, he, he was not very able. I don't understand what they were doing.
Actually, I mean...
Basically burying the gravel out of the creek. And taking the soil, putting it in the bag.
That's a better alternative than putting it in the right-of-way, which they could've done. And then that would've left you high and dry there. So I, I, really, I think what they did was better than what it could've been. Cause they could just take those, that gravel out and dump it right on the right-of-way. Cause it's the, the district has the right to do that. So it's a, I think that's
Agreed.
The best it could've been. It's gra, it's gravelly stuff. It's not good stuff. Nobody wants it, but burying it deep, it is. Burying it deep is better than just dumping it right in the right-of-way and making that really hard to find.
Grab the fire came out, grab the roads. Honestly.
So we still need to approve the support?
Uh, where are we at? We got a, it's the liquidated damages, a decision on that. I mean, well, if it's already listed in the report, you can just approve the report. Anything that's different than the report, you have to do a separate
A separate for the changes.
Includes that, yeah, like Rodney's.
If we increase that?
That's the only change you made, was it?
I believe so. And then putting in there about withholding retainage, um, we have it as with, withholding retainage until the issue is resolved, but we're gonna try to negotiate, and we don't even need to say anything about that at this point in time. Jim, let's
We're gonna approve, approve your report.
Yep.
For, for the contractor, and for your general, your crop damage assessment, and a couple of changes and some CRP ground. And don't think you did anything with your yields. And you got a wild cap, it works out, but that's, that works fine, so just appear to report and then hang onto the retainage for pending issues and then no one goes on. Did I make it worse than?
No. The entire.
Everything.
Entire, everything is.
We don't, yeah, we're gonna not release it.
We know the absolute damages.
Not release the retainage.
I mean, we know the absolute damages that we're gonna retain, it's like
Thirty-three something.
Thirty-three something.
And when you balance that, you're gonna be retaining
And, uh, that one's a lead.
And just, we can leave it, I think, as that issue resolved, cause it will be, if I talk with them and try to negotiate something. So if they're not coming back, you guys have your contractor to come and deal with it. So if that would be a resolve, I have the issue in my mind, so we can keep that as a statement.
So Barb, be good that I can probably, right?
Yeah. So I think the motion is to approve the engineer's report as presented, and to approve the damages report with the exception on cruder, and then that's from seventy-two to five eighty on that one line. The entire retainage will be withheld until issues are resolved regarding the outlets? Is that what you want?
Basically.
If you make it more, outlets, you would make it more vague than that.
The remaining retainage, cause it, right now, the entire
Four, thirty-three.
That's already taken out.
The remaining retainage will be held until final issues are resolved, cause that doesn't leave us just yet, but
Yeah, there are a few, until final.
Not mentioning the title?
No. Cause Colin can have that conversation with them, so I don't know what I'm doing.
So we need a motion to approve the engineer's report as presented, and to approve the damages report with the exception on cruder. Also, the remaining retainage will be held until final, final issues are resolved.
Motion by Sharon, second by Dan. Really discussion? All in favor of saying?
Aye.
All those? Okay. Gentlemen, thank you for coming. Make sure to tell Colin about some of your things.
And make sure to contact.
So then we're going to have a motion to close this hearing that it's
Yeah.
Is this as finished or not? Well.
You can, you don't need to have another hearing to determine whether or not you're gonna release the retainage. You can just take that up and do it for me. That won't really involve the landowners or lawyers or anything that's a direct negotiation and discussion.
But we do need a motion to close this.
Decision, uh, after, I
Well, we close this hearing now, Washington close. And we'll be close the hearing. This hearing.
We need to have a closing hearing before we make the motion. Okay, that was
Dennis, I'll say.
Second by Dan. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All those? Okay. Everybody done with the thing? I think so. Motion by Dennis, Jerry.
I'll say.
Second by Dan. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
All those? I'm gonna watch this stuff back. Yes, we, we didn't make sure? Well, this has to be done like that.
I know.
Why can't they come back? Just don't come back as our, yes.